Mahalo for joining us today. We will begin with a pulle by Commissioner Marfield.
Aloha, kakahiaka kako, epule kako.
Oui, can we pull it really quick?
That's okay. Epo le kako. Ekeakoa manaloa amenakapuna mamua omako. Hea vahile omahalo ke ia nonamea pao punio kako. Ke olu olu mai e homai ka ike ka ikaika kamea kupana noke ia papa hanano ke ia hana nuu. Ke olu olu mai e malamanapoe i a aqua koa mai i a ka analike kolako a leo. Leo mai ka'i leo olu olu ke olu olu e ha'avi mai amako a ka'i kaikanoke ia hala vaine. Okay, ia kaleo mahalo me ka leo ha'a ha'a, amene.
Okay, the meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held virtually on Zoom and in person at Halepunu'i 91-5420 Kapolee Parkway, Kapolei Oahu. Kali Watson, Chairman of the Commission. Today's date is Tuesday, July 22, 2025, and it's 9:35. Leo, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Freitas.
Sure.
Commissioner Kalakini. Commissioner Kalepa.
President.
Commissioner Kaniaku is excused. Commissioner La Sua. Commissioner Marfield.
I'll.
Commissioner Namua is excused. Commissioner Arnelis.
Hi.
Chair Watson.
Here.
Seven members present, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's see. We will begin this morning with public testimony, followed by item F3, which was deferred from action yesterday. Following that, we will proceed with the J agenda. We do have quite a few on the J agenda, about 16. So, you know, we're going to be kind of strict about the 10-minute time period for your presentation. So we'd appreciate, you know, kind of provide the others with respect so that they all have a time to present their information. The Commission will recess for lunch at 12 noon and reconvene one hour later to continue the remainder of the J agenda. Hopefully, we'll get through all the people on the agenda. Okay, so we'll begin with public testimony. We're going to go straight to F3. Okay, no public testimony. Okay, on this F3, I'm going to recuse myself and Sanoy, Marfield, handle the action item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me? No. Hello?
Okay, good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we, I have provided you copies of the minutes and as well as the bylaws and the articles of incorporation for Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association, a copy of it. I received it yesterday from them, from Chris. And today, Mr. Kamaki Kanaheli, as well as Todd Hedrick from the team will are here to answer any question that you may have. And I think they have a presentation also.
In the state. I was chairman for 30 years. And as I traveled to every single island, visiting every single homestead association, I realized that they weren't really accomplishing what their lands are supposed to be doing. So today, that center is the only center of its kind statewide on Hawaiian homestead lands. Now, this year, the act is 100 years old. And can you imagine in 100 years, the only thing that was really accomplished that's economically sound and developed is a shopping center? I said, Kali, I don't ever recall any organization looking into economic development. They're looking at how many years waiting for your home, for your home to be called that you can get a lease. They weren't looking at the development of their community, only that they wanted a lease. And now the lease is 199 years for a dollar a year.
Well, this Nanakuli Village Center was a vision of the Nanakuli Homestead Community Association that was based on surveys, charrettes, a ton of community meetings in which the beneficiaries articulated their concerns, their needs, and the desires to see what was being built or needed to be built in their communities to service these educational, cultural, social, economic needs that weren't being addressed. They came up with this vision that Hawaiian Community Development assisted with partnerships with various entities depending on the different unit we were dealing with. One was a housing. So that's where urban housing community came into play with the Cultural Learning Center. That's where Commemorative Schools came into play. They were able to step up and commit a permanent presence of having a facility like this, Kalani Ho'kaha Cultural Center in Nanakuli. It was this $10 million commitment that the KS trustees authorized. And with the help of staff, this has become a reality. Now, with respect to the commercial medical clinics portion, you know, that became a reality partly because of the use of new market tax credits, as well as working with American Savings Bank, I think with Gabley and some of the staff there that was willing to step up and make this a reality. Pono Shim is also very instrumental with Punavai, an entity that was created to access these new market tax credits. And when we use these various funding sources, as well as a commitment of two individuals, Chris Flaherty and Anthony Barquette, who not only personally stepped up, but financially stepped up to guarantee the funding and viability of this project. Without their personal guarantees, this project would not have become a reality.
And so in the creation of the center, I wanted to do two things. The shopping center to be built and Halema Kana. By the way, quite a few have come to visit me. And when they passed the shopping center, they cannot believe native Hawaiians on Hawaiian homestead lands built it. The center would have mana or strength in it if it was not only built by native Hawaiian community and the native Hawaiians, but it was also used as a basis for which Hawaiians can come and get employment and learn economic development skills. Whether they're going to be a waitress at Wendy's or whatever, or work at Long. I wanted them to know that the center was built for them, not only for them to come shop, but for them to find employment. I hope economically, our people will grow with it and will be a little more proud of themselves. The center's thoughts and everything could not have been built without the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association, which I sit as its president. And so what we all agreed to was that the center will produce an economic development base and that the center would take its profits and transfer it to the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association so that they, who initiated it, would benefit and its monies would be used for scholarships, would be used for our kids, would be used for further development in the community and make it work.
So Kali and I looked at a lot of different approaches for affordable housing. And we found that rental housing is the most effective approach. And we looked at self-help housing, Habitat for Humanity, low-income loans. But realistically, rental housing is effective because what it does is it allows families to pay an affordable monthly payment towards housing so that they have more money to spend for other things.
Well, Halema Kana on Nanakuli was a project that generated affordable housing for the community. It was plagued by a lot of overcrowded housing conditions or households. And so we needed to build something which is affordable. And partnering with urban housing communities and Nanakuli Homestead Association, Hawaiian Community Development was able to access funding that about $14.5 million, which included low-income housing tax credits, both federal and state, along with bonds, as well as the rental housing revolving fund. So this $14.5 million project generated 48 units, primarily three bedrooms, for large families primarily, which is, you know, always a problem, especially on the Leeward Coast, in finding that kind of affordable housing. So on average, the units are about $350 a month.
As a native Hawaiian that was brought up on a homestead and I'm also on the waitlist, I understand what not only the people need, but what they want to. They want a quality product, something that they can be proud of. And the way Kali and I approach it, we try to bring them the best quality, the biggest homes that they can have inside. We think it's really important because when people come home and they have a sense of pride, it's good for their well-being.
Welcome to Halema Kana. Welcome to our own affordable housing pico here in Nanakuli, first of its kind on homestead. What it brings to our families here in 48 families is sustainability, family strengthening, helping to provide us tools to become homeowners in the future. We're seven years old. I'm blessed to say that we are blessed as a community. We've partnered with many, many orgs that bring service into our resource center. Was a key bridge into building sustainability, strengthening our families with tools they need and financial literacy, how to purchase a home, healthy eating, daycare, early childhood, parent workshops. So all these things are key and it's part of our larger community into helping strengthen our families.
I've been living in Nanakuli 37. Me and Kyoki is neighbors for the past two decades. I've been here for 21 years. And Nanakuli has never seen anything like this, such as the Nanakuli Village Center. We're just proud to be from the community with this type of establishment for our community to enjoy. We want this to be a family-oriented environment. We just can't wait for the future holding start.
So we're excited that this Nanakuli Village Center and its different components provide and addresses some of the needs that are required to be addressed in order to position our beneficiaries to succeed in society. Whether it be job opportunities, whether it be cultural awareness, or they can be proud to be Hawaiian, but also not only being educated, but having a safe place to live and as well as addressing their health problems. And so this Nanakuli Village collectively provides tremendous access to these various needs. And so we're excited about not only the success of this village center, but the opportunities to replicate this in other homestead communities.
The center is a very, very valuable model for the future of economic development for all of our people statewide. It had to start somewhere. People like Kali and myself and Patty and everybody, unless we had the courage to go do it, it'll never happen.
Mahalo. Mahalo for that presentation. So I just wanted to go back to yesterday when F3 came in front of us, came in front of the Commission. We had some questions about kind of the status of the board. And so we wanted to give you an opportunity to share your current status and what that looks like.
I want to say thank you. Thank you to the board. I just wanted to let you know that I, like Kamaki said, that Uncle Kamaki said, I do only have a few minutes unfortunately, but Chris Flaherty is on the line as well. And following yesterday's meeting, I did share with Uncle Kamaki and the board that there was a request for a copy of the bylaws and minutes. And so those were provided last night. And we're happy to talk about those items.
Paul Io, I live on Second, in Nanakuli, Second Road. My address is 89-362 Lepeka Avenue. And I'm a member of this organization and a voted second vice president.
Aloha, I'm Althea Watanabe. I'm first vice president in this association, born and raised in Nanakuli.
Kamaki Kanaheli. President of the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Community Association. Not born and raised in Nanakuli. I was actually born and raised on the island of Iihau. Couldn't speak English, had to come over to Kauai for education and then Oahu. Quickly, I was educated at the Church College of Hawaii when it was called Church College. Then I went on to BYU Provo for a master's degree and worked in Washington DC for administrative of education to the National Endowment for the Arts, at which time I returned home because they were wanting, the governor wanted me to get into politics. And so I became the chair of the Office of Foreign Affairs at that time. So it goes on and on and on, but it's part of my role.
I was going to, just a brief introduction. My name is Todd Hedrick. I've been in Hawaii for over 40 years. Came over to go to college and then have been in commercial real estate my entire working career for over 35 years. And I got involved with the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead through Chris Flaherty. And it's just been a real blessing to get to know the shopping center and what the goals are of the center and what goes on in this neighborhood. So thank you.
Aloha, my name is Arlene Lucero. I am four-generation homesteader there in Nanakuli. I inherited my great-grandfather and grandma's property. Else I'd be probably be on the waitlist still. But anyway, as of June, I thought I was secretary, but I'm not. But that's okay. I'm glad to hand over the hard work to somebody else. But as of July 10th, I thought we were to have a community meeting that I did set up with Kamaki, but later he changed his mind and wanted to make sure we had a quorum. So they, when I went to the meeting, that was normally scheduled with Kamaki, they, the auntie there said, oh, they changed the date. And I says, what? She said, oh, Tuesday they met. And I said, okay, Auntie, how many people were there? Five. I said, okay, do you know who? So she knows the people who usually meet. So she said, Althea, her husband, Paul Io, there's another two I can't recollect. But she knew four names, but she did, and Kamaki. But she did not know the fifth member that met there. So I don't know if I'm a secretary or if I'm on the board anymore. Sorry for the confusion.
And so at this time, I want to take a motion so that we can open the floor for discussion and have our public testimony. Oh, we have him. Oh, okay, just carry on. Can I bring up the public testifiers? Yep. Can I call the first public testimony of Arlene Lucero, who is at the table already?
Thank you. Didn't know I was going to be first. So this organization has always been dear to my heart. I have been a community advocate in different areas in my community and serve on various boards. So I do know bylaws drive an organization. But I was allowed, just overwhelmed, that when Kali called in 2022 to finally get together to have a meeting for our community, I was ecstatic. Because I was calling Kamaki throughout the years, checking on him and his health, checking on his mama, and asking when we would have a meeting for our community. I was always told, oh, don't worry, we're working on the village center. First was Halema Kana, and then it was our village center. And that everything is okay, don't need to have meeting because we're busy. I said, okay. Still, we have an obligation to our community to be able to let them know at what status we are at. But I guess you all know that we did have problems trying to build our Halema Kana. There was a big revolt. So half a community was divided and we took major hits, major hits in 2014. We held the community meetings according to our bylaws. Our community came up and they spoke their hearts about whether they agreed to it or did not. And Halema Kana was one of those things where because of federal regulations that now we had to open it up to outsiders and not necessarily to homesteaders. So our community, I understand that. But anyway, they formed an Aho Pawa'a, Nanakuli Aho Pawa'a organization, Uncle Black and Shalita Mahway. But yet the families who revolted were the first to move into our Halema Kana. But that's nice, right? So when the village center was also built, I asked Kamaki when we would have a meeting. And his response was, we didn't need to worry, that everything's okay. And with Mike and Kali and Kamaki, I tried not to worry. But it was always in my heart's intent to make sure we were accountable to our people. Now, according to this bylaws, we have not held meetings because internally there has been things we needed to look at internally. And there needs to be an internal review of all the documentation, financial statements. I pulled the 990 on my own to be able to see because I was told there was no money, okay? I'm not a CPM, but my daughter-in-law is. So I was going to, I hate to do this, but we are obligated by our purpose to protect the people of ouraina, to make sure the promises that were made are being kept. But when there's no money, no accountability, even the $25,000 that they said we got, it's invisible money, sorry. We have not gotten bank accounts. According to our president, she said she went down three times, waited for Kamaki. And Lihi is our treasurer. I spoke with Lihi this morning, she has not received anything. So we have this invisible $25,000. After I complained about bringing in the 990 and showing Kali at that first meeting, the second meeting, I think we got the money. But for me, it was like, that wasn't enough.
Auntie, can you wrap up your thoughts?
So just my whole concern is this board is not legitimately elected according to my bylaws. Thank you very much, our bylaws.
Mahalo. Next, Mahalo. Next testifier is Kapua Kili'ikua Kamai. Auntie?
Aloha, ovau kapua Kili'ikua Kamai, noho au. Ikaaina ho opula'pula ka'ava'avaa vainei, mai au. I do not reside in Nanakuli Homestead. I recognize that this is not a direct impact to me. But as a neighboring beneficiary that does have family and friends in that community, I would like to share my personal concerns. First off, you know, regarding them on the agenda, I support their lease reduction. You know, I support the presence. I appreciate what Kamaki, Kali, and Mike have done for the community. I totally appreciate that mall, that center, because it is an economic development for the community. However, I have heard the calls and the pleas for the community to ask, when is our community meeting? We would like to know because as a homestead association that represents your community, you need to hear from your community. What is their concerns? How are we, the leadership, addressing their concerns above and beyond this? So my concerns is not limited to this, but it's regarding the communication, the two-way routine communication of the community to their responsible board. So I recognize that they have a nonprofit status that allows for perpetual members and elected members. I have not seen their bylaws since it started up because I was very curious. I'm very curious about things because it was interesting. And even Kamaki was sharing with us when we used to meet for our Moku Puni meetings about how unique they are, like our native cousins on the continent, how they have theirs in perpetuity. This is how Nanakuli has theirs. However, the community needs accountability. The community needs to know that their concerns about the other things going on, they shouldn't have to come to you as individuals. Although it just speaks more when we do come to you as individuals with our community that has duly elected us. So when was the last time that they had a community-wide, democratically-elected board? Or are we going to also allow, I don't know if their bylaws say that they can select? You know, so when we think about who's representing the community, we have to think about these. Because sometimes when we get into power, we have a tendency to want to maintain that control. But we do have another entity on Nanakuli, Aho Pua'o Nanakuli, that speaks and works with their community directly. Their fruits, their works, I have seen, which is not anything physical and concrete like this. But they represent the community and they are speaking to the community on a monthly basis as this board, this department knows, because you've attended and you've presented at their monthly meetings. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next testifier, Georgette Myers.
I'm here to, just to talk about, like everybody else is talking about, that we are always left in the back burner and we don't know what's going on. So it causes a lot of problems for us. And so, that's why we are all here to say that, you know, I've been in the community, my parents fourth generation, just like Arlene. And, you know, my mom was a midwife and my grandma worked for the Queen as a doctor in the community. And so the community means so much to me that I've been fighting practically all my life. Stop the road on Keanu Point, Trax Beach and everything. Sewer, the sewer thing about with the Hawaiian homes, wanting to, you know, it costs you so much money to shit than to drink water. But without water, we would die without water. So the grandfathering us in is what we got. But now the sewer thing is coming up again. But this whole thing about communication on all of you guys' part, you know, the leaders who wants to, you know, do good, which I'm hoping. But now I see that the whole thing about Hawaiian homes. You know, I've been thinking about it so much that this is what my conclusion was, is that they want us to fail. Everything we do, it seems like we, there's always blocks. There's always, like for an example, like, you know, Kali Watson got appointed twice. And the only thing that I got in my mind that has been festering in my mind is that when that brother from Waianao killed himself in his mom's home, burned himself. And that's an Hawaiian, mostly he's a human being. And so it really bothers me that people would, would forget what their purpose is when they tell us this and this and that and that. But it doesn't happen that way. It comes out real ugly. Why? Why are we living the white man's way of living? Why aren't we not going porno with what our culture really represents? This whole thing about the mall and stuff like that, that's really good. I applaud them for all their good work. That's fantastic. But the community constantly telling me, where's the money, Georgette? Where's, how come we're not, how come we're gonna use the Culture Center? You know, that's, that's my concern, is that I supported a lot of these things when I was involved. But then in the same token, you know, I wasn't, I didn't feel comfortable in certain things that was happening. Because it's gonna be all good, like they say, but it is should be all good for the people, especially our people. We, we've been through so much that you have no idea, especially when you're living good. And so now, that's the reason why I'm here. I'm so concerned that, that again, we're gonna get blackballed. Again, we're gonna get the shit end of the, of the rope. And I'm tired of it. I'm really tired. And so they need to be accounted, accounted to, to inform us so that we know if you leave us flat and they leave us alone for a long time, that's when problem starts. So Kali, I wanna address this to you then. You know, when I first met you and I got to know you, I, I thought you was fantastic. I don't feel like that anymore. Why? I don't feel comfortable. You know, our people, like me, I'm a fourth generation. My home is so old, I need help. I mean, you know.
Auntie, if you can finish your thoughts, please.
Yes. So all I'm saying is that you need to come home and talk to us. We need to find out what's going on. Because there's so many bad things going on that it's not good.
Mahalo. Mahalo for your mana'o. Saying no more testifier. Sure.
I, I'm trying not to sound like I, well, I can just be honest and true because that's why I'm here, to tell the truth. And truth will satisfy. Because this project is for our community. It's not about me. It's not about these two guys. It's about how we're going future. And I refuse to fight with one out of Hawaiian at a time like this where we need to be embracing collaboration. You, Mr. Chairman, and you, brother. You guys forget you guys where? I asked you for reports. Now let's talk about policy, okay? We got a nonprofit that was, was formulated to, and come on, man. You guys wasn't, you don't even live in a community that get pounded every day.
Uncle, can we just?
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry. But the policy is that we have, when, when, we do have a nonprofit. And nothing wrong with these guys, you know, I wanna embrace them to participate. But this wasn't a right process. We get away, and if we're on the board, we, we didn't get any notification. And who's this guy Chris, man? Is he part of my community that, that why I had to meet with him, Kali? That he says that he would meet with me for what purpose? I'm gonna make such a, a decision for my community in one meeting? No. This thing all was made from collective mana'o. And quite frankly, I, I don't even agree with anything of you guys' work. Because of the act, there's a lot of us, and I bear witness to all the young people that I know and people of my age, I, thirty, seventy-six. And I thank the Lord I'm still here. But get us that really wanna go back to fishing boy. But you guys don't like the white touch the kai, that's why. And so, please, commissioners, I, I'm sorry if we be making ass because we, because these guys don't like, don't like meat. And I'm not gonna kiss or call it for nobody, man. But I'm gonna tell you something, man, policy-wise. Peter Jocker, the father of public administration, man, now I see what he said about span of control. I thought the people had the control. And so I, I ask that you guys, I, I don't wanna stop now, but see, we don't even know. We got inside there, talk about that, the, the, the whole board is gonna turn over. And I, I didn't, out here, who did you participate in? We need more people. I've been, I've been talking about that. I needed the Zoom, but I couldn't even get funding. And I see a lot of people get, get, get.
Mahalo. Mahalo, Uncle, for your thoughts. If I can open it up to the commissioners, if you folks have any question, comments. Commissioner Kalakini.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to everyone who came up to share your mana'o. So, just for clarity for myself and so people understand my perspective. Yesterday, we discussed this and what is really in front of the commission are two main items. One is the lease, is the rent. There's, there's a, a period of time for a certain amount and then it, it increases after a certain. The other item in front of us is to make a decision on the mortgage with American Savings Bank. Okay. So yesterday, we, well, I don't wanna speak for all my colleagues, but for myself, the concern was the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homes Community Association, right? From the business perspective, for me, it looked like a sound thing and the decision to, to to accept and agree to those two items I mentioned, I'm very supportive of, right? However, after hearing testimony, I, I felt there's there is a disconnect, or I don't know if that's the proper word, within the community as to the board. So that's why we asked for the bylaws and for the minutes. Because we wanted to, I wanted to be part of, to make, ensuring that the Nanakuli Hawaiian Homes Community Association supports these two items that are before us. You know, and I haven't heard anything from testimony that opposes these two items that is in front of the commission to make a decision on. Which is good from a business perspective. That's good. We're all on the same, you know, same thoughts, for myself, anyway. However, I do, I hear there is some concerns within the community association about money, about reports, about communication. And that's something that we have, as a commission, as long as I've been on, had to have addressed in other community associations where there have been disagreements, right? And so for us, in previous discussions with, you know, our AG, et cetera, our, our mandate was really that we do not get involved in, in the dealings of the associations. That's not our kuliana and, and it's proper. We shouldn't. That's your, that's Nanakuli Hawaiian Homes Community Association's, right, responsibility. So I guess my point, my thoughts are that I support these two items in front of us. I will support that for Nanakuli Hawaiian Homes Community Association. But I do urge and, you know, implore and hope that the association and all of the folks involved can get together and, and work on resolving the different concerns. I've seen that in different associations where I represent the district of East Hawaii. It takes time. It takes effort, but it can be done.
Can I ask a question? So can there be a deferment of at least thirty days so Kali can provide those documentations to our association? And then our special members are able to come to the next meeting of this board to have an internal review of everything that is due to our community and our board? If we can have that deferred for thirty days, I think, I do support that center, like I said. It's a blessing because I live just a block and a half away and I can go to Lons. And I see our people, our Hawaiian people working. So I don't wanna jeopardize anything that will keep us from keeping this entity. And that was my greatest fear in coming here and I had to pull it a whole lot. But I'll tell you that when I went to the one hundred sixty-first anniversary of Kahuanu, the Kahua Sunday, when she had service, she said, you are not alone. God will bring to light everything that was hidden in darkness. And that was my call to speak truth, Kali. So I ask you, please, give to our people, our, our treasurer Lehe, who has been there for many more years. These two new people have never, ever, from bylaws, ministers, they're new. And they have a lot to learn. But I was just so happy that we were trying to have a meeting for our people to allow the, the meetings to happen, just to happen, okay? So maybe a deferment might be an easier thing for you all. Thank you so much.
Chair Marfo, just one last comment. So I, I hear that and like in yesterday's discussion, that was one of the questions I asked about the urgency of, you know, taking action. So to, to your question, Arlene, it's up, I mean, that's a consideration that the commission can take up. Thank you, Chair Marfo.
So, yeah, yesterday's, it was a little confusing yesterday. And I thank you folks for coming today with a great presentation as well as providing the necessary documentation to give us light on the overall situation. From an economic standpoint, I think we're all kind of lining up with the same thought process that this is a needed, a needed internal revenue stream for our people. You know, as a commission and a staff, we don't, we don't wanna get involved. We wanna let you folks steer canoe, sail your canoe. Every Aho Pawa' is different. You can't compare the Hawaiian from Waimea from Kauai High to Nanakuli. Different ethos, different way of life, different thought process within your own, your own communities. And that's something that we will, we'll continue to respect and respect the kuliana. When finances are involved, it gets sticky fast. And you know, there are times when we have to implement ourselves into a process, but we don't really want to. To kind of piggyback what Commissioner Kalakini was saying. I think it's safe to say we are united as far as moving forward from an economic perspective. However, communication is a key piece here. Communication, lack of communication is a problem in every relationship, no matter what, what part of life, what component of life it's in. I always believe in trying to over-communicate. I think it raises the level of integrity that you're operating at. But then again, that's something that you folks kind of need to handle on your guys' side of the ball here. I am for, I, I am in much great favor of moving this process forward. The time constraint, like Auntie, you asked for, the time constraint, I, I think the last thing we wanna do is prolong this and then jeopardize this process moving forward because there's a lot at stake here. We do get hit a lot, like you saw in the lead session, social media, where how we utilize our commercial lands. There's a, there's an argument, you know, it should be native Hawaiian preference, or should we go for the most amount of money? But when you have a situation like this where you see native Hawaiians excelling and thriving, it's a good thing. It's, it's really a good thing. So the last thing that we wanna do is jeopardize this overall process. And again, you have, you just have ten years before these, these rates change. But is there, we do, I just humbly like to ask to please communicate with your beneficiaries, with your community. Thank you.
Can I say, I appreciate you guys' support for the program because we are here to support that. What we, what we ask is that the commissioners consider the frustration of the community because this is a wonderful program. But the, the value of it should be transferred to the community, not to one person or one organization or even make it up. And as you can see from the beginning, we had people that never liked getting involved. But then now that, you know, the pie is there, you get all kinds of guys. And so we sorry to bring this in front of the commission. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. But people gotta do what they gotta do because this is a political process.
Mahalo. Okay, sorry. Well said, Uncle. Very well said. Thank you for articulating that.
Thank you, but we support the, as I said, we don't know the, the details between the lines.
So I think that, that key piece right there. And I think Chris said yesterday, when this, this economic engine turns, there will be more of a, of a revenue stream going.
We heard that for all kinds.
So, but I think, to kind of piggyback, no, this is just to kind of, just to try to answer your question as best I possibly can. We can, we can possibly, we can help in that process. If this thing does go through, the questions that need to be answered from the community perspective, the department can play a hand in that and play, have a level of accountability to, hey, what's, where is the financial records here? Where's the money going and et cetera?
I have another testifier on Zoom, Patty Teruya.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm so sorry. I jumped in late, full of my, thank you, Commissioner. Can I, I was just really watching and it's kind of painful because I love all of you who belong in our community. You're all great leaders and have done so much. But I think the commission misunderstands that there are two different phases. Phase one is trying to recuperate or recondition the Nanakuli Neighborhood, Nanakuli Homestead Association. But I think the commission what really need to take a look at is what's in front of you on the agenda. It's the amendment on the loan for to American Savings Bank. To the commission, what can happen is that the delay may have to, what the, what Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Association and management might have to do is charge our vendors market rate if this, if this does not look forward. It's important to know what, what is in front of us. You know, it's sad to say that one day we'll pray together that.
Sorry, I think your video is breaking up.
And support the, okay, and to support the loan remaining in front of us. Thank you very much. Apologize. I'm in the, I'm in a bad area. Thank you so much.
Mahalo. Any other commissioners have, go ahead. Commissioner Kalapa.
Yes. You know, first off, I wanna commend the Nanakuli Community Association, phase one and phase two. This is a role model for all Hawaiian home associations. You guys are operating at a higher level. Along with that becomes a greater responsibility of now you're managing part of the resources. The success or leadership of this community association is the key to the success of being a role model for community association. of being a role model for community associations moving forward. In front of us is the two items that this commission has to vote on. The importance of us voting on this now is timely, is a time concern because of some of the shops that are locally run there that don't have the financial backing to pay those kinds of fees. This is a great opportunity. Your problems with the association, I think every association has that problem. But we got to figure out a way. I really would like to see your association go back after this, hold a meeting and come up with solutions and come back to us. Because we can only vote on these two items. The issues that you guys are bringing forward to us today, only you can solve those problems. Not, Kali cannot solve those problems for you guys. Our job is to support the efforts and values that you guys put forth to make your community a better place. You guys are very fortunate to have what you have.
I rescind my request to wait 30 days. Please decide.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Because, because it's, it's important to the rest of the community. This, this thing that's happening between can be solved, but not at the cost of helping our vendors, our Hawaiian vendors that are trying to help themselves. It's really, really important. And so I ask, I ask you guys to go back, meet, have quorum, include the community. And even if you agree to disagree, at least you guys can know what, what is happening. It's important for this commission to have a vote so that we can create or we can allow the people that are operationing and, and have shops in that area to be able to keep going. And so as a commissioner, listening to all of this is, you know, we all hurting as Hawaiians. But we got to be solution based. We got to find ways to work together, support one another. And I just want to commend your community because from the outside looking in, I wish I had that in my community. Along with that comes a lot of responsibility and a lot of problems that only we can solve. So I encourage you to go back, meet with your community and, and come back to us with solution-based answers. So thank you.
Mahalo. Commissioner Arnellis.
I just have a comment. I, I would like to echo the remarks made by my former commissioner here. I'm sure you all have served on boards, commissions. Sounds like some of you really have lifetimes of service involved. And I really feel like the communication is so important, especially when there's finances involved. And to hold meetings where special members are not included, to hold meetings that may or may not have quorum, I mean, it just raises a lot of concern and apprehension and quite frankly distrust in the community. And so while the, the items before us are commendable, I, I too wish we had something like this on Kauai. But you have to be transparent. It's that simple. To build community, it's really based on trust and it's based on two-way communication. Dialogue really requires two ways. And I support this. I support the work that you're doing. I commend the work, but that needs to be worked out. I would love for, like Commissioner Kalapa said, I would love to see a meeting, a valid meeting where, you know, it's inclusive and then to come back and share the results of that. I think you really could set the bar for, for changing what has previously occurred because this is an economic engine for your community. Mahalo.
Seeing no other questions or comments, Leah, can we call for the vote roll call, please?
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kalakini?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalapa?
Aye.
Commissioner Lasua?
Aye.
Commissioner Arnellis?
Aye.
And Chair Marfil?
Aye.
Six ayes, the motion is carry.
Mahalanoi. And I just want to add to every, what everyone has says, communication is key. As a Nana Kuli homesteader, it's, it's really important to get that communication because I've never gotten communication. And so as a homesteader in the community, it's really important for us to begin that. And, and taking off my hat, I would, I would lend myself to help in that process if you need me to be.
I appreciate that very much simply because, you know, when you come from Nana Kuli, one of the great things about our Nana Kuli people is that we've got guts. We're willing to take on anything. Sure, we're going to stumble and fall, but we're going to pick ourselves up and dust ourselves up and go forward again. We have had more failures than successes. At the end of the day, we have a shopping center. Which of you at this table on your amoku have a shopping center? We provide jobs for our people. We even have a halibacana, low income housing. Where is your low income housing? So as we set this model, we hope you will consider the model and maybe consider building such a place in your Inaho Pula Pula. I think for me, I need to prepare for the next generation. The board that you see here is the most loyal board I have ever worked with. We all know second Tuesday of every month is our community meeting. That the last meeting, Althea, our brother and her hubby were the only one that showed up with the, which is inclusion of our secretary. Sometimes I have to go door to door, knock on the doors and say, "Come." And they won't come out, "Oh, come on, we don't have enough time." "Oh, we're too busy. You guys go do it." Then when we do it, they get luha. Palo noya. So, members of the commission.
If you had told me, thank you.
Thank you. So member of the commission, we have, I'll touch bases quickly on some of their interests. The money that's in American Saving Bank is going to remain right where it is untouched until you all and we all decide what is best for our community. The second thing is that our next goal is to make sure that the next generation comes in and we train and we teach. You need to know that one of our unfortunate flaws, like myself, is that the next generation much rather go with, they don't want to come to the meetings. They want to watch it on the television sets. Our kupunas have no idea how it operates. So we show up at the meetings. The young generation, if it's not on the flat screen, they're not going to come. So this community grows right into the next century. And there are those of us who are still around that will hold be the foundation. Kali, I appreciate inviting us and giving an update very, very much. And if there are any more questions, we would be happy to answer.
That's fine.
Brother Paul?
Go ahead.
It's just a comment, not a question. I'm sorry. Hey, I only got a minute. Thank you, board. Seriously, thank you. The fact that we're here to testify or to give testimony in behalf of this gentleman, I think he's a brave man to do what he did and the courage that he seeked to do this large project, along with you, Kali, yeah? I applaud you seriously. I really do. I'm going to get teary eyed now because I wasn't living here. I was living in Washington. So to come back to Nana Kuli where my wife and kids were growing, to come back to a community that has a shopping center is amazing for me coming from Washington. It's like Hawaii Kai and the West Side as far as my description, right? And so supporting that shopping center, I go there every day to get my share of ice. So I would invite all of you to come there and support the center in whatever way you can, whatever way you can, whether you're just passing through and coming through. But in reality, yes, it's one of the best things just happened to us Hawaiians. So now that I'm in second vice president of the association, and that's where y'all mentioned the words that we really want to see, transparency. That's me. Law enforcement, transparency. It's the only way you communicate, transparency. So I, being on the board now, second vice president, my first vice president and president, we'll get those things accomplished, guaranteed. It ain't going to take a while, I know that. So saying that in front of you, you have the people here in front of you now. You can picture their faces. And if you want to call me, you can call me because everybody got my phone number and everybody got my email. We're being transparent, just to let you folks know. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on and we'll start the J agenda. To ensure that we can accommodate all testimony, then I mentioned this earlier, with our allotted time, we kindly ask each of you to be as concise and efficient as possible. Please limit your remarks to 10 minutes, allow everyone the opportunity to be heard. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated and will help us ensure a productive and timely session. Mahalos. So the first person on the J agenda, Butch Ramos.
Good morning. My name is Butch Ramos. I live in Kiwalo and appreciate your time. Why I'm here today is that approximately five years ago, we got notice from the, the department that they're going to put up a new project in back of our house. And when I questioned that, I talked to Stuart Matsunaga and Kali Watson. And I told him that in 20 years, the previous project, nobody has maintained it. There's about a 20-foot easement in back of my house that they're promised to keep clean. The grass is maybe about eight feet tall. And I told Stuart that you can put this other project up and who's going to maintain it again? He told me, "No, we have money now." It's been approximately three years since the project was finished. The grass is now eight feet tall. You remember Lahaina, okay? The fence in back of my house is about five feet. And from the house to the fence and from the roof to the fence is about two feet. With the grass growing eight feet, if anything happens, my roof is going to catch fire and everything else will go. I was at a meeting at Papukalea last night and they said they have a contract in, in place to start cutting their grass, which is great. But this is what I told Stuart. Stuart, this is stupid where you guys are going to not. Which is great, but this is what I, what, you cannot plant grass over there. It's all just going to grow and you're going to have to cut it every so often. The thing is you need to either gennite or shot creek or whatever it is. She, the girl told me last night, the first contract they got to cut the grass was 600,000, which is totally out of line. Again, if they're going to come and do what they say they're going to do, which is come about every three, about three times a year, what do you think that's going to add up? You guys need to think about, like I said, genniting the thing so that the grass doesn't grow anymore and you don't have to spend any more money. But I am holding the department and the commission responsible. If anything happens, you got to maintain their grass. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Hey, the next person, Charmaine Naoni. Puny Keikau Oha, excuse me. Yeah.
Aloha, good morning, commissioners. My name is Puny Keikau Oha. I'm Hawaiian Homestead Leslie in Papukalea. I am currently the senior vice president of Kula Nonapo Eha Va'i and we are very happy to be here this morning to provide the commission a report on what we have been doing in Papukalea for the past year and in the year moving forward. So we created a, a video for you to enjoy and then I can wrap it up after we pop. Mahalo.
Ninety-two provides education and health programs to improve the well-being and quality of life of Hawaiian homestead residents. Kula also hosts annual community events such as the Papukalea Ohana Health Fair, Trunketree and Holiday Holo Holo to celebrate our strong history of resilience, unity and community.
Ah, okay. Don't worry. Okay. Um, the file is so big. You see, I had staff make me this video and then, you know, I don't know how to upload it. So I can do this. All right. So Kula Nonapo Eha Va'i is a community-based nonprofit. We were founded in 1992. We serve the Hawaiian homestead communities of Papukalea, Kevalo and Kalavahine. There are approximately 2,000 native Hawaiians that live in our region. The majority, the large majority of our, our people are kupuna. And kupuna and school-aged children, Papukalea has strong, heavy on the voice. So in the last year, two funding that we received from our different funding base, bases, we've been able to provide a kupuna community care network program for almost 200 kupuna in Papukalea. They meet twice a week at the Papukalea Community Center. They have classes, they have kani kapila, pula and all the good things to keep them engaged and socially engaged, educated, you know, informed of what's going on around them and to support them. We also have an after-school program called Lamaku and that program serves all our Papukalea school, schoolchildren from kindergarten to eighth grade. And then we have our junior leaders program for middle school and high. These, these two programs for our company are funded by the Native Hawaiian Education Program. We have an NHA grant and also from appropriations funding with the support of Congressman Case. So those two are there. We also, as a result of COVID, when COVID happened, Papukalea, we experienced a lot of people in our crowded, already crowded homes who were on the sidewalks. And so we needed to help the community stay safe and help them to find housing. The Department of Hawaiian Homeland provided Papukalea to Kula, our community development grant, that helped us house and take care of our people that were on the streets. That program enabled us to find housing for 47 homeless people, houseless. We call them houseless, not homeless, houseless. And these are all Papukalea, Kevalo and Kalavahine people. We do the Ho'okele program. We were able to find them housing. And we all know that you cannot just put a roof over our people. You have to help them hold their hand and make sure they keep everything up to date. And so we do a little bit of, we don't, we don't like the word case manage. We just kind of help them to, to, you know, get on their feet and keep everything lights on, food coming in, come here, come here. That is our Ho'okele program. Ho'okele also, yeah, my time. Ho'okele also provides resources for what we call people that are already in the hale, yeah, crowded, and they're trying to find a place to live. So we help the families also. So we help the families also to get our resources and information and workshops on different programs that can help them to increase their finances and do different things that can help them to get that boost that they need. Okay, that's Ho'okele. I wanted to say thank you for that to the department. We are in year three of the three-year grant of Ho'okele. So we look forward to talking story and see what, what more we can, we can do. But we cannot let our people go. That's what we know. We, we can't let them go right now. Okay, then we have, more importantly, I think you have in your hands. So the white book is the Hawaiian Homestead Help Survey. Since 2014, Papua Kolea has provided this survey to our people in the homesteads across the state. We have conducted, worked with Hawaiian homestead leaders. And we've conducted this survey in Papua Kolea, Kailepa, Koihei. And then we've done Kapolei, Nanakuli, no, Kapolei, Waianae, Waiananalo, Paukukamal. We are about to start with Kaumana and Pi Honoa next month. So this is a combination of the survey is very comprehensive. But it is a tool in which our people, our leaders, homestead leaders can have their own data to help them to go and get the resources and identify where in their community are the greatest needs. Okay, so you have Waiananalo's report. In the back of that report is the appendices of all the previous homesteads and their data. So you can look at comparison data. Okay, that's in the back. But we are out there doing it right now. We are funded by Papa Olalokahi to get these homestead health surveys done. Uh, come January 2026, we will be in Panaeva Kealka with Miley Luvi. Miley has asked that we come and bring this to Panaeva. So we're coming up. Okay, and then last but not least, the yellow fly that you have. Pinina Puawaina is the latest project that Kula Nonapoe Hawaii. Thank you to the commission for your support in allowing or authorizing us to get a right of entry. We received a right of entry permit to 7.25 acres of land on Puawaina in just this month, just last week. And I want to say again, thank you to Linda and Shelley and everybody in LMD who helped us to prepare the land and get us on this property. So as of right now, Kula Nonapoe Hawaii has literally the keys to the lock. And we are ready to begin the due diligence requirements of the HHL to start in the planning and development of the kupuna supportive living center as it is defined in Papua Kolea's regional plan. So we are ready to roll on that side. Yep, I think that's it. Any questions? It's a lot. We were very busy. We're happy to be here. I really, really want to thank the department. Um, you know, they've helped us take all the homeless off of the mountainside in Puawaina. And on behalf of the community, I want to thank the department for the resources you put forth to bring the people out, especially our ohana and mulokai who came with Kuki Gaspar and the people there, all the men that came and helped to take all that opala off the mountain. So thank you very much. The ina is ready for us and we have kuliana to secure it now. And so we will, we will be doing that moving forward. Okay, I'm Paul.
Yeah. Puny had a question. You know, it's great you, you folks are involved in clearing off and have cleared off the land. And with the right entry, you'd be able to access and do further studies and research regarding the site. It seems like it's a pretty long process you gotta go through. Obviously, and you talk about years versus a year. During that time period where you can be doing all these studies and what have you. What, what, what are you guys going to do with the property? Because we've had some issues with homeless occupying the land. And so we gotta prevent that from reoccurring. So can you guys provide some assistance in monitoring as well as, you know, maybe some of this homelessness from the homestead community?
Yeah.
So if you guys can get active in working with the department to keep the area clear.
Yes, we will work with the department to adjust it. Right now, Kali, my directions from the department, they've already, you know, gave people like a ticket for trespassing. I have the copies of the tickets, the police reports and their pictures. Our kuliana now from the department is once we have them trespassed and we're to call HPD and they can be arrested. So that's what we're doing now. The department has already come out to offer social services to help the, those that have been on the mountain. We know they're coming back. I mean, they're right around the corner. So our kuliana is to look at how do we secure it and what, you know, and presence. So we need to figure out, you know, presence and then work with those, with, with that group. We know that they're from Honolulu. Uh, we know that none of them are from Papua Kolea. They're outside.
Okay.
Uh, Papua Kolea stayed on our streets and we took care of them. So, um, yeah, we, um, the community is very well aware, but right now our kuliana is to make sure everybody is safe. So last night I told everybody, do not approach anyone on that hill. Our kuliana is to call HPD. They've, they've done what they need to do. So thank you for enforcement. Uh, the enforcement division and David and everybody that came out. But we will be addressing it and we'll help the department. We'll help the department and see how can we, you know, further work with those that are, I, I gotta tell you that, that they're, they like being on the mountain. I mean, they told the people in Punchbowl that they're safe. They feel safe on that mountain because it's state land, but they're trespassing. So we know there's a lot going on. So this is an ongoing problem. We know it's not all Paul gone. This is going to happen, continue to happen. I do want to say we are very mindful. This location for the kupuna supportive living center at the foot, at the base of the National Cemetery of the Pacific will be very visual, very upfront. So our, one of our major, um, you know, initiatives is to make sure we work closely with the neighbors adjacent to the property. So everybody already has seen presence and they know we're coming and they know we're here. And that there's efforts to move along. So the condo on this side and all the private homeowners on Prospect are very well aware that Papua Kolea is taking that, that Kula is on that.
I, I think part of the concern is, especially in other areas where they are homeless. And close to 90, 95% of these wildfires are caused by humans. And so we, we can't have these guides there. And it's, it creates a danger not only to the area, but even Papua Kolea, Kalawaini and, you know, Kiwalo. So please work with our enforcement and you guys can be the eyes and ears. You guys see people there, let us know right away so we can get them off.
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
So we have a strong firework, firewise group in Papua Kolea. Anuhea, Kani Ali'i and Noel Shaw and everyone in Papua Kolea that's already doing fire breaks and such around existing properties in Papua Kolea.
How about that site? Uh, do you guys, are you guys putting any fire breaks and?
Oh, yeah, a lot.
Great.
And we are actually helping to clear brush from vacant lots or abandoned lots to push that all down. So we're, they did a whole screening of Papua Kolea for firewise.
Okay.
That's done.
Then with respect to the environmental assessment, I'm assuming you're, you have some kind of plans as to structures that you're going to build. Is that, uh, you know, is it more a resource center for workers or is it actually going to include some kupuna housing or no?
This is kupuna. So this is a, uh, so what we're creating is kupuna, so kupuna housing, right? And right now the plans are being set by community, what that will look like, how that will lay. Um, we're looking at creating, really looking at creating a campus, Kali, an indigenous campus for native Hawaiian kupuna to age safely in place. So it's not just putting up housing. What do you put on the property to support kupuna to enable them to live? So is it adult daycare? Is it bringing one, one clinic, right? The partners that we have, that we have on the table are major. And they are willing to work with us. So looking at, we have partnerships with Queens.
Oh, great.
We have partnerships with UH. And then also building a pipeline for our kids to look at entering health and using the campus as a pipeline. So we're utilizing Stevenson, Roosevelt, you know, all the schools. So it's some, it's a, it's a really multi-pronged approach to enabling kupuna not to just have hale and live and just put them there. No, what do we put under there to secure them to be there safely? Yeah, so that, that development is quite expansive. And we have the Ika, we just have to have our people get in the conversation, go kuka, kuka and lay this out, how's it going to look? And the first thing is to determine how much acreage out of the 7.25 can we literally build on? Right? We're talking, we are, we are on volcanic hillside, right? So.
Is there any integration and connection with Lilia's project?
Yeah, so it is our, it is our plan to work with Lilia to ensure that both projects are, you know, are, are complementary of each other.
Okay.
Yeah, so Lilia's starting her meetings for, she's a little ahead of, of Kula. She starts her meeting the next round in August, August 4th. So we are running, we, two nonprofits are running, developing two separate projects. But it is a plan to make sure that they look conducive. Yeah, that they're not, they're not, you know, contrary to other ones. So that, that is our path.
Yeah, I would also, as a suggestion. You know, to finance these projects is, is pretty expensive. And I went and I visited the Viki Hope Takamini. She has a, a project in Kakaako and I think it cost him something like $45 million to build that. And, uh, but what was nice about it is she used EAH. That's a affordable housing developer and was able to access tax credits and other funding and bonds as well as the foundations. The contributions from the different foundations really made it possible. So I would suggest maybe you talk to them. And the other one that would, I think, provide you some assistance would be Luna Lilo Homes. They have this guy, Keola Dean, who's the head guy. And they just picked up a trustee that's familiar with that type of financing. And they have a couple sites they're doing and, you know, preparing for kupuna housing along with the programs and all the things that come with it. So that would also be, you know, I, I think a good source of information and possible collaboration.
Thank you. Yeah. Yep.
I can send you the info if you want.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Puny. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Puny.
Thank you.
Okay, the next J seven, Hiva Hiva Kahayaku.
Aloha. Aloha, my name is Hiva Hiva Kahayaku. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, we're going to be sent, um, sharing a PowerPoint presentation. And I think Michael is going to be controlling that for me.
Okay, go ahead, Hiva.
Okay, um, aloha, my name is Hiva Hiva Kahayaku Rodenhurst. And I'll be giving this presentation on behalf of the Maderis Ohana. I am here to address the matter that should have been resolved 30 years ago. Next slide, please. The Maderis Ohana are requesting a contested case hearing. They asked to be, they asked that the hearing be in front of the Board of Commissioners. They're requesting a lease and they're requesting that you recognize Ohana's equitable interest in the property, which is $10,000 paid towards the purchase from 1994 through 1996. And my Ohana has invested more than $200,000 over the past 30 years to maintain the home and ina. Next slide, please. Sorry, they asked to have this meeting in front of the Board of Commissioners and the hearing officers due to the. I'm so sorry, hello. Um, yes, so they asked to have this meeting in front of the Board of Commissioners and not a hearing officer due to the fact that both my auntie and uncle are kupunas with severe health problems. We have provided DHHL with doctor's notes explaining that my uncle had multiple strokes, yet you still decided to take them to court almost three decades later and evicted them on December 12 of 2024, leaving them houseless since. It is important for us to present our case to you, who overall will be making the final decision. I need you to hear this. I do have a question. Do you provide legal representation for beneficiaries? If you can hire attorneys as hearing officers, can you also hire them to represent beneficiaries, especially kupuna on fixed incomes with health issues for these hearings? Now, I do want to point out that Auntie Denell and Uncle Kelly are married and vote over 50% Hawaiian and have been on the waiting list since August of 1990. Uncle Kelly is on the Oahu residential list and their daughter Ibo is on the Oahu residential and Ag list. Um, I also wanted to point out that in 1978, the successors had to be at least 50% Hawaiian. Given how strictly they enforce the rules against us, I asked the DHHL verify if the successor who inherited the house, Helen, met that requirement. Was the same scrutiny and education of rules enforced then as it is now? Um, in the top left corner is a picture of my grandma, Mary Jane Kahayaku, who was Daniel Kahavai's first wife. And here's Auntie Denell when she went to, um, joined the military and then as she got married. And this is them today as kupunas. Next slide, please. This is a background on the purchase agreement. Papa Kahavai was aging and wanted to move to Las Vegas and was talking about selling the house. This is when my auntie asked if he would sell the house to her and she could move in and come take care of him. Papa Kai, Papa Kahavai.
One moment, Hiva, they gotta change the slide. It didn't coincide with what you're talking about. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you. Um, Papa, Papa Kahavai offered a purchase price of 200, um, $20,000 and they could pay $500 a month. They both agreed and the Ohana moved in June of 1994. They turned the garage into a big room for Papa Kahavai and Auntie Denell and her Ohana moved into the main house. Papa Kahavai believed as many have before him that you could just sell your home to your daughter. He accepted payments, wrote receipts by hand, and in return, he got to be around his grandkids. They took care of him. They helped pay bills, helped fix up the house, helped maintain the yard and planted more trees. He promised to turn the house over to them and our Ohana depended on that promise for over 30 years. They built their lives around it. Their reliance created a contract, equitable interest and a promissory estoppel. I believe that if courts can enforce a promise made, so can this board. Next slide, please. Oh, this is the, this is the correct slide right now. So lease history. No, please go back one slide. Yeah, thank you. So this does the purchase agreement. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, Papa Kai, Papa Kahavai was awarded lease number 4378 in the Nanakuli Homestead on January 23rd, 1978. His second wife, Heather, helped with the application and listed their daughter Helen as a successor. As I've shared earlier, in 1994, Auntie Denell and Uncle Kelly entered into a purchase agreement with Papa. They moved in, paid him $500 a month, took care of him and the house. But sadly Papa Kahavai passed away unexpectedly on January 14th, 1996, at the age of 59 from a heart attack. Unfortunately, he never formally went to DHHL to initiate the transfer. So February 6th, 1996, DHHL notified Auntie Denell that Helen was a successor on record and that she needed to occupy the house. Auntie Denell responded to their letters and informed DHHL that she was purchasing the house from her father and that he intended for the house to be hers. A few weeks later, Helen filed a district court case, 1RC-96-02336 to evict Auntie and her Ohana from the house. The judge informed them that he could not hear title disputes in that court. It's a circuit court matter. Legal aid helped my Auntie Denell with the motion to dismiss the case where she submitted receipts from Papa as her evidence that she was purchasing the house. This case lasted a little over two months and her motion to dismiss was granted. Since the court did not evict my auntie then, Helen requested to surrender the house back to DHHL and wanted to transfer to another property. Two weeks after the court case, DHHL approves the surrender without addressing the dispute to title. Then Helen received over $40,000, the praise value of the home, even though she did not reside there, had not invested in the upkeep and had no financial physical contribution to the property. DHHL later transferred her to another DHHL homestead in Waianae Kai, which she purchased for about $80,000 and currently resides at today.
Wrong screen. Gotta change the screen.
No, it's okay. This is the same screen. Sorry. So DHHL then informed my auntie that the house was surrendered and that she had to return, that they, that it has been returned to the inventory. The Maderis Ohana continues residing in the Nanakuli house and writes letters asking if DHHL will work with us because the house meant a lot to our Ohana and my auntie and uncle already paid money towards purchasing it. What about their money? I ask you, how can a house be surrendered into DHHL's inventory before being offered to the next living descendant, especially one who already demonstrated financial investment, occupancy and eligibility as a beneficiary? Next court case, I mean. Next court case, I mean, next case, side piece. So this is the district court case from nineteen ninety-six that we lost. We were not able to provide this case as evidence in the twenty twenty-four DHHL eviction of my auntie and uncle because the court records were so old, they only found it after December nineteen twenty twenty-four, which the eviction happened already. I've typed out the docket to show a timeline to the board. After this case, Helen never filed a circuit court case as informed by the judge to clear the title dispute. DHHL allowed her to surrender the lease and they both ignored the Maderis Ohana's claim. Auntie Denell did seek legal representation from legal aid and native Hawaiian legal counsel and they were informed to wait for Helen or DHHL to take her to court, then they could help. But unfortunately, DHHL took her to court twenty-eight years later. Next slide, please. I provided a timeline of events. So from July fifteenth, nineteen ninety-six, my auntie requests a contested case hearing. On July thirty-eighth, nineteen ninety-six, Hawaiian homes commissioners held a meeting in Paku Kalo Maui and voted to deny my auntie's request, which was not, which she was not aware of this hearing and was not living on that island at that time. So she was not there to defend herself. She even reached out to Senator Akaka, who sent a DHHL letter on her behalf and Kali Watson did respond to that. Pretty much the response was that there wasn't any evidence of her purchase claim, but while denying her an opportunity to have a hearing and provide them with that evidence. In nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-eight, multiple notices to vacate were sent out to our Ohana and each time Auntie Denell responded and DHHL failed to reply. Next slide, please. From nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and fifteen, for about seventeen years, we didn't hear from anyone at DHHL and figured that they were letting them stay. Around twenty fifteen, the notices were being served again mainly around the holidays and we responded in writing each time. Finally, in twenty twenty-four, we were served with an eviction complaint and in December twelfth of twenty twenty-four, they evicted two kupunas and left them on the streets. I myself had tried to reach out to DHHL, but I never got any response back until me and my husband, we went to the Hawaiian homes meeting in Maile and Chairman Kali Watson said that he would work with us, which led to our first contested case hearing. Next slide, please. We were assigned the hearing officer Koopu, who was very nice, but he informed us that he would hear our case and then he would make a legal decision and then he would inform the Hawaiian Home Commissioners of this decision and then you would choose to agree or deny it. If it was denied, we'd have to be ready to present our case again to you. We're also going up against DHHL administration and the Attorney General's office and I'm not an attorney. So I did seek legal assistance and the assistance that we had was leading us on a sovereign route. Now, I know that in order for my Ohana to safely be returned to their home, that requires a lease. And only the DHHL Board of, Board of Commissioners can grant that lease, which is why we are here today. Next slide, please. I do want to point out that this is a legacy that is ready to continue. The home is already paid off. There's no debt, no mortgage, no loan, no state funding would be required to assume ownership. Three generations are invested in this property. Uncle Kelly E is on the Oahu's DHHL waiting list. Their daughter Ipo, a Hawaiian studies graduate now earning a BA's in Hawaiian Pacific Studies, is also on the list for Oahu ag and residential and their grandchildren stand next in line. If awarded the lease, they can have access to renovate the house and have support for programs like NASA, HUD, et cetera. By awarding the lease, it is pono and practical. It saves DHHL from costly renovations and delays as the house is built in nineteen seventy-eight. It prevents years of vacancy, legal fees and loss, and it protects the trust's resources and fulfills the intent of the HHCA, which is keeping multi-generational Hawaiians Ohanas housed on their land. Next slide, please. So legacy is earned through action. And I just want to put out that all these fruits on this picture right here are grown on the aina on this zero point seventeen of an acre of land. Next slide, please. The Maderis Ohana planted kallo, mango, noni. Next slide, please. Bananas, marangas, citrus trees, figs, flowers, ferns. Next slide, please. Papaya, mountain apple, coconut, guava. Next slide, please. Ava laao, they raised chicken for fertilizer to restore the soil. Not just money, four generations of our Ohana's money has been put into this aina. This is Uncle Kelly E, his daughter Ipo and their grandchildren. Next slide, please. Although many of our loved ones has passed on, we were there and we know that this house was theirs. This Ohana has built lifetimes of memories here. This is pictures of me when I was younger, when Auntie Denell and them were purchasing the house and this is pictures of my mother. I also danced hula with their daughter, so I was around a lot during that time. Next slide, please. They made it into a place of safety and celebration for multiple generations. Next slide, please. It's a pico for our Ohana. This is a last celebration that we had at the house, which was a Thanksgiving and birthday celebrations. Next slide, please. This is not a handout. It's a pono ask. They've lived, loved and cared for this home. Next slide, please. This home came from Papa. It holds memories, our roots and legacy. It's an opportunity to resolve, to resolve a thirty-year burden that has cast a dark shadow over this Ohana and we are asking for a lease to their home and security for our kupuna and the next generation of the Maderis Ohana. A Ohana who has sworn, who has already shown that they are ready, able and willing to malama this kuliana into the next generation. Next slide, please. I am asking you to do what is the most pono solution, which is returning my kupuna to their home and giving us a contested case hearing so that I can help them return. Thank you.
Aloha, I am Denell Maderis. My husband is Kelly Maderis. He has experienced fish strokes through the last two years to present. He is deteriorating. I'm asking you folks kindly to please replace this back to our home so my husband can continue what he started. Although he has lost memory and he forgets things and he cannot see at times, but he cries, he gets depression and we have multiple injuries. We live in a tent. It is not easy. It's more costly. We are still paying for the water and electric on property. We have multiple plants. We have had our animals currently locked up, killed, they're dead, still in the house. Our animals on the property has died. We had to give up our people, the fishes that was given to us. They put it in a small tank, they died. I'm just asking you folks to please, please. I wanna hope pono with you folks. It is the value of kanakamole. Mahalo for your support. Thank you.
Denell, you know, we were presented hearings officers reported recommended order yesterday concerning your case, your contested case, which you have or had, in which it kind of laid out a history of all the meetings about where you guys were present, where, you know, I guess part of the process, you gotta submit a list of witnesses and so forth. And so it was continued quite a few times to allow your representatives to comply with the requirements of the process. But then after a bunch of delays, the contested case require, or process was somewhat abandoned on the basis that, I guess, Kelly, Hulu Hulu responded that the petitioner was no longer pursuing a contested case or a lease from the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, but rather the petitioner was actively seeking redress from the US District Court and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. The petitioner was questioned and orally confirmed that it was her position that he no longer wished to pursue the contested case before the Hawaiian Homes Commission and was no longer seeking a lease in the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. But here you are today asking for a contested case hearing, which you originally granted and went through the process, but then decided to abandon it. So it's a little confusing.
Okay.
So if you can explain what's going on here.
May I explain for her, please?
That portion. Do you want to read it or you would like me to read it?
Well, I can explain it.
Sovereignty area.
I can explain it on behalf. Aloha, Kali Watson. My name is Hiva Hiva Kahayaku and I was also assisting my auntie. So when we were going through the process, we did, I did actually ask him to continue with one time. And that's because we were also trying to receive legal assistance from, you know, other people who could assist us with the case. Now, yes, I do, I, as I said in our PowerPoint presentation, we did go ahead and we did go down a sovereign route. But my concern for my kupuna is that, you know, this has been a long twenty-eight year process, thirty-year process for her. So her faith in this system, sometimes it was fickle and she was concerned and mainly we were concerned with the point as well that we're gonna give this whole presentation, right, all of our evidence to the, to the hearing officer and then the hearing officer is going to go to you guys and give the presentation to his opinion to you and then you could agree and deny or deny it. That part right there did make my auntie feel uncomfortable because she felt that we should have this presentation in front of you. That is where I thought, you know, this situation might have changed to, to putting us in front of you, but it did end up taking us down the sovereign route. And that is why I'm coming back to you again because I did run into David Hope at the Shaw meeting. And after that meeting, I did speak with him and I voiced my concerns to him and he told me that it doesn't hurt to try to come back again and ask for a contested case hearing, ask for it in front of you to have my kupuna feel comfortable. And he doesn't know if you guys provide legal representation, but if that was an option where I could also request that for help for them because they are sickly, they don't have the income to support themselves and we have reached out to legal aid and native Hawaiian legal counsel and pretty much, you know, they can't support us or help us with this case. So I have been doing my research to do the best that I can do. And, you know, even though we did this, choose to go down this sovereign route, as I've said earlier, I know that the best and safe way for my kupuna to have, to be returned back to their house is only through, at least through you guys. And I want them to at least try and go through the process. Let's finish this whole process, give you guys our presentation, show you guys the evidence, bring our witnesses forward and then let's see what you guys come back to us and say. That's why I wanted to create this visual thing so that you can see that I tried to put thirty years of what has happened, you know, changing of administration, yet my auntie was in this house and took care of this house. And now thirty years later, right, twenty-eight years later, I could say, they're being evicted. And now they're kupunas, but not with this, they don't have the same resources or opportunity, but they did invest their whole life into this house and depended on that promise from her father. Now, I agree that there was discrepancies because he didn't follow the procedure and I say that.
Excuse me, excuse me. I, I don't want to get into the merits of the case. You know, I'm somewhat familiar with it. And I do remember when we, the commission authorized a contested case here and it was against the recommendation of staff. And so we, we went that route to give you guys that opportunity to do your presentation. And in looking at the history with David Koopu, he also gave you guys a lot of leeway to submit the continuance and all this. Now, I, I'm not sure the commission is willing to give you that, an additional chance. But let me ask you this, and I, I recognize you're not a lawyer, which, you know, that, you know, is kind of dangerous for you to be taking on that duties, especially for some people that are facing some severe consequences based on your decisions. And so I, I kind of am questioning whether that's really appropriate for you to be doing that. But that's at your own risk and more importantly, the petitioner here. I am not sure, we can pick it up again. The commission yesterday already granted the order dismissing the case based on your guys' presentation and rejection and you going on the sovereignty route, which, you know, you're not gonna get too much success with that, I can tell you that. But, you know, there's a lot of background to this. You know, and I, I was hoping that, you know, the hearings officers could listen to it and make a resolution and give closure to it. But if you're not gonna participate in the process unless you reconsider and now committed to participating in the process and abandoning this sovereign argument. I mean, you can go that route, but you're not gonna, it's not gonna be a very productive approach. What, what's your response? Are you gonna continue to represent?
Yes, we, unless you guys can provide us, provide the beneficiaries with legal representation, my auntie does not have anyone to assist her, so I will do my best to represent my Ohana and help these two kupuna through the process. I, I will stand up and do that because we don't have anybody else to do it. And yes, I am willing to go through the whole process and fulfill all that we need to fulfill, address what we need to address because I do want to also resolve this and my hopes is that we can come to a good resolution for both for DHHL and this Ohana.
Okay, you know, we've gotten your information as well as what the request is. We can't take action today on this. If anything, we'd have to take it up for consideration next month. Whether the commission is inclined to grant, grant it, I, I think that remains to be seen. I'm not sure. But definitely, you know, if we're gonna give you this second opportunity, we can't be, you know, going through the whole process, having and paying a hearings officer. You know, it's just not, doesn't work. So I, I need a, at least, I can't speak for the commission, but we will take it up next month and we do have your requests and the commission can consider it. But I would ask that you add a little bit more information regarding the commitment to go through the process. But then again, you know, you're not a lawyer and it's somewhat an involved process with the witnesses, exhibit list and all kinds of other things. So, I don't know.
So that with the board, does the commissioners have any type of legal representation for beneficiaries?
No, we don't provide legal representation. That's what legal aid and native Hawaiian legal corp is about, but you've already approached them. For whatever reasons, they denied your requests. I can't speak for them. You might want to ask again.
Well, we go up against the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and
They have a lot of other cases going up against us.
General.
Native Hawaiian legal corp. We got a ton of cases with those guys.
Yeah.
We, okay, we will, we will try our best to seek legal representation. But at the same time, it's my kupuna need assistance and we do want to go through this process because as I said earlier, this is the safest route.
Okay, well, we've, we've exhausted your time here, so we do have your requests. We will take it up next month based on a recommendation from staff and then we'll proceed from there.
Okay, I, I do also want to just say one thing is that I have been in communication with, with Leah and and I have open email communication, but I was not aware that you guys were discussing or closing our requests yesterday because, and I would have come forward yesterday as well, but.
So I see, but this proposed draft, yes, you have to. This proposed draft regarding remove or dismissal of the contested case hearing. I believe you received a copy of that proposal. No?
No. Hiva, can you read the sovereign part that you didn't read during the slide?
Yeah, I, I explained that part. So that's what I'm just saying. Yeah.
Well, anyway, like I said, we can't take action today, so we will consider it next commission meeting and then, you know, we'll go from there. So we can do it on our side. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Denell. Okay, then next testifier, Humalani Chadel. Thank you. Next person, Harold Abe.
Hello, Chairman Watson and fellow commissioners. My name is Harold Abe and a quick overview of what brought me to this point was, uh, you know, we had a chance to purchase, uh, a lesi's, uh, property on Apu Kapu in Waimea on Big Island. It's, uh, Joanne and Warwick, uh, Iwohe. They accepted our offer. We, um, in December of 2024, on January and 2025, we filled out the application for transfer and sent that in. Um, at that time, my wife Kimberly Abe, who has been a beneficiary on the list for the past 38, 40 years. And, uh, we were, um, happy and looking forward to, um, becoming all our homeowners on, uh, on our, our, our land. Um, somewhere around February, we were informed that there was a problem with my wife's, uh, qualification as a beneficiary, which came as a big surprise to us. And, um, we were told we were going to get a letter from DHHL explaining everything. Um, one week went by, no letter. Another week went by, no letter. We had friends and family letting us know that, you know, oh, it was sent and you should be getting it. Well, we didn't get it. So at March 17th, at the Hawaiian Home Commission meeting in Waimea, I got up and talked before this commission. And at that time, I didn't know, uh, I didn't even have a reason why I was there, except that our transfer didn't go through. Cause we hadn't received the letter yet. I spoke, uh, with Juan Garcia, who told me that a letter was sent to us and also a letter explaining that there was a question of my wife's, um, qualification for a beneficiary that was sent in November of 2022. At that time, I said, well, we didn't get a letter. Had we gotten a letter, we would have addressed that at that time. And he said, well, maybe, maybe we didn't have your correct address. Well, we've had the same address for the past five years. And we get every single notice from Hawaiian homes of a meeting, whether it's in Hilo, West Hawaii, Waimea, whether it's a planning, commission meeting, everything, except this letter we didn't get. Now, something that that's, that's that important of you're not qualified to no longer be on the beneficiary list, there should be more than one letter sent. Well, that's come and gone. So it's heartbreaking to see what it's, uh, you know, when, when you're on the list, you, you, you hold your head kind of a little higher. Because, you know, you're, you're qualified. Back when she went in with her grandmother with the necessary paperwork, was the commission and the application department at that time, were they wrong? Or are you guys right? I, I, I can't answer that. Now, as soon as we found out, we finally got the letter, uh, the November 22 letter and the letter that was supposedly going to be sent in February on March 18th. At that March 18th meeting, my wife testified in front of the commission. Chairman Watson wasn't there. He had, he had some other business to do. But, you know, I, I think when my wife speaks, you can feel the hurt. It's as if, it's as if she died on the list. She's alive, but she died. She requested a contested hearing right away, which was received and acknowledged to us, which that was a plus. Now, during this process, we're told that this could take two years. And even if we get a hearing commissioner, hearing officer, that's another six months. Well, the Iwohies, they can't wait two years, much less six months. It's, it's a blessing to us that, that they are willing to hold out this long. You know, other people, they just would have said, shoot, we got, we have other people that want to buy our, our land. We just do that and you guys work out your thing and, you know, when, when you get that resolved and, you know, good luck to you. But I'm here today to ask this commission to help us to expedite this process. Because November 2022, it was determined that my wife, there was a question of my wife's beneficiary status. For us to request a hearing in 2025 and they're doing an investigation? What do they need to investigate? They already made a determination in November of 2022. It's almost three years. They need another four or five years? It's, it's a, it was a good thing that my wife went in, that her grandmother took her down to when she was young. Because can you imagine if she went in when she was 40? And it took her another 40 years and then at 80, we decided to go, to go and purchase this property. And then only to, to be told that you don't have, you didn't meet the beneficiary qualifications. Now you're going to wait another five years at 80? As it is, we're, I'm going to be 65 next month. She's going to be 65 in another two years. To do another two years, that means 67 and 65. In, in what? That just doesn't seem right to me. You know, when, when, when I, when I told some people that I was coming here today, some other people told me, you're, you're, you're just wasting your time. You're stupid. You're, you're, you're dumb. Well, I've been called worse. I've been told that I've did things in my lifetime that are worse than what, what this is. But I believe in this. My wife needs to be reinstated to that beneficiary list. We're ready to go. She has the necessary, what she feels is necessary to reinstate her onto this list. We're ready to go. You guys have had November 2022 to get all your ducks in a row. Let's go. Let's get this hearing going and, and get this resolved. Now, you guys are a Hawaiian commission, the board. You guys are held to a higher standard. And we look to you guys. You know, my only regret, well, I don't, I have a lot more than one regret, but, you know, it's just that it's, it's not right what was done to my wife. And she needs to be reinstated to that beneficiary list. And thank you for, for having.
Ms. Abe, let me ask you, let me ask you some questions. You folks who are looking to purchase a lot in Pukapu from the Iwohies. Right, so her being on the waiting list is kind of irrelevant if you're going to buy the, the lot. Would you agree?
Well, we were told that in order for us to purchase the.
Yeah, she has to be qualified.
She has to be qualified.
But with respect to the waiting list, it's irrelevant if you're going to buy the lot. Would you agree?
Well, yes, I would agree, but also.
Wait, let me finish. Uh, the, so the issue is to whether she's 50% Hawaiian, is that it?
Yes.
And so that's what you want to contest a case hearing about. Now, uh, the documentation that your wife has, is it pretty clear that she's half?
Yes, she feels that, that what she has is, 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 shows that she's 50%.
Okay, so if we could, uh, you know, I, I'm willing to try and expedite the thing where we're going to establish she's, uh, 50% and, you know, staff takes a look and, and agrees. Uh, maybe that's something we can do in-house, you know, I'm not going to guarantee that. But if we internally can figure out, yeah, she's definitely qualified. I can issue a letter, then you can maybe proceed with the, uh, the purchase, regardless of what, you know, she is on the waiting list. So, uh, have you, uh, you know, have you, uh, you guys familiar with this case? Maybe you can give me some guidance in the commission, how we should go.
Good morning, commission. Uh, for the record, Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. This is a situation where the applicant Kimberly Abe, um, is what we call a P applicant, P applicant. She's on the list. Um, however, her NHQ cannot be verified at 50%. Uh, the request for contested case hearing has been received. Uh, we are finalizing the memo, uh, to provide to you to deliberate on, uh, our recommendation uh, with respect to the request. So, uh, there's a great possibility that this case will go be, before the commission. Probably through a, through a hearings officer, uh, for a contested case hearing. So I would, um, probably not want to say too much. Cause again, like I said, it's going to go through contested case hearing. It, it's a, a matter of, um, the petitioner, um, providing documents to affirm, uh, again, pursuant to the rule that she is in fact, or the act that she is in fact 50% Hawaiian.
What he's saying is they have the documents.
They have the documents, however, with the documents, we cannot establish the 50%.
So even with their documents, you're saying is a question?
Yes.
But you're saying it's clear if she is.
Yes, I, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, um. Okay, why don't we, um, I'll, I'll take a look at the case and then we'll make, uh, have you already been granted a contested case hearing?
No, right now, we're finalizing the recommendation for.
Which is to.
Which, we are committing, uh, we're looking to get this memo completed for, uh, commission to consider, uh, at next month's commission meeting.
That's what I was, that's why I was saying that, that the investigation, they, they say that it's in the process of an investigation. But they've had since Nov, from, from, from my point of view, since they drafted a letter in November of 2022, that that's almost three years ago.
Okay.
You should be ready to go.
I understand, I understand your frustration. Uh, I can guarantee you next month, we'll take action on your contested case hearing and move that along. We'll, we'll try to, we're picking up some new hearings officers, so we'll try to resolve it quick. And we'll give you a yay and a a pretty quick.
Okay.
Based on the hearings officers' recommendation.
And I'll, I'll be back because, you know, it, I grew up in Ever Beach, so my family is here in Ever Beach and.
Okay.
I, I don't want to take a chance on doing, uh, working on it Zoom or on this high tech thing because I'm not very good at it and I don't want to be breaking up while, you know.
Understand.
My, I'm trying to make my point. And yeah, if, if that could happen.
It's going to happen next. I, I guarantee you that. We'll have it, uh, a decision. And I'm assuming the commission will go along with giving you a contested case hearing that we can move forward or you can move forward.
That's.
We'll appoint a hearings officer and we'll get going. Okay?
That's great. Thank you for hearing.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Francis. Uh, in the letter that you folks sent to him and his family, did it, did it describe where the deficiencies were? Meaning back, you know, four years ago when his wife was okay to be.
Yeah, I believe it's, it has to do with a certain ancestor, so it's.
What changed from 40 years ago till now? Was, was that articulated to them in the letter? Or do they know why the change, why the, why she was 50% Hawaiian back 40 years ago and now she's not 50%?
Yeah, I, I would, I would, Commissioner, thank you for the question. I think it's best to wait for the memo with the specific, um,
Okay.
Specifics case with respect to.
Okay, yeah, I know there's things we can discuss here, but just so that he knows what's needed from his side to bring to the table and where the deficiencies are or the disagreement is, for lack of better words. I know there's a lot of stuff that we can talk about, but just to make sure he knows and his family knows what, what's needed from their side to prove a proof.
Yeah, I, I kind of like that idea. I mean, let's talk sorry and, you know, we'll tell you where you deficient and, you know.
Yeah.
And you can show us, well, no, that ain't the case. And we move forward, man. Let's, let's go. But, but as a fallback to preserve your rights, where they might, uh, even with the documentation and deficiency, it's still a question and we got to go with the.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, just, just, just like not, you know, somebody told me that, you know, if even, um, somebody is accused of murder, they get their day in court, they get all the evidence.
No, no, we'll give you a day. You don't have to commit murder, guy.
And we, we need, we, we just want some kind of communication. And, you know, I was told that, you know, you guys were told just to speak to the lesi. As, as of today, at this moment, the only time that the lesi got a notice was that the application for transfer was received. As far as anything else, then there's, there's a problem with, uh, with the.
Qualification.
Qualification of the other party.
Right.
As, you know, and, and what's happening and how they, if they even requested a contested hearing or where it's at. They don't know anything. The only, the only reason why they know what's going on is because from us, we're contacting them. We're letting them know. And, you know, they, they were expecting to be on Maui by this time. Because they have property on, on Maui that they're now paying for and going back and forth from the Big Island to Maui, back and forth. And you guys know that now it's cheaper to go to California than it is to go from Big Island to Hilo, Big Island to, to Oahu, Big Island to Maui. It's, you know, that's $400 a shot.
Yeah.
And that's both of them going. So that, that's $800 every time they want to go home.
Yeah, that, yeah, we, we really do have to resolve this pretty quick.
Yeah.
In fairness to everybody, so.
And that'd be great. And, you know, thank you to this commission. Um, real quick, if I could share, um, what Kalani Fronda posted yesterday of, uh, on, uh, I, I thought it was pretty powerful. That, um, Kuhiyo had wrote, written. His final words were, "To stick together and try to agree to the best of your ability to meet the most important problem, the rehabilitation of our race." I've always been, although I had never qualified to be on that beneficiary list, I've always been proud to be Hawaiian. Being from high school, you know, being involved in one of the first, you know, Hawaiian groups at our high school through going, when I moved to the California, you know, always being proud of being Hawaiian. Even when it wasn't a thing to be Hawaiian. For me, it was always a thing to be Hawaiian. And thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Abe. Uh, let's see, the next, uh, person, Demont Manole.
Hey, aloha, everybody. You can hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Hey, how's it going, everybody? Aloha. Uh, Demont Clay Manole along with my wife, um, Aiko Manole. And, uh, just wanted to, um, uh, kick off from what Brother Abe just said. But it's a great thing to be proud of, being a Hawaiian and moving our lahui forward. Well, we doing our part. Um, rather than coming to the commission and, and exhibiting, uh, uh, this disease called chronic complainerism. Uh, we are here to be able to come to the commission to demonstrate what happens when Hawaiians put down their spears against each other and start working with each other. put down their spears against each other and start working with each other. And what is great about what's happening right now is that the leadership from the top, and in my eyes, the only leadership that matters to us is the commission. The commission working with the department. We now have a commission and a department that seems to be um, on the same wavelength. You know, of course, every single commissioner's vote matters. And whether they vote up or down on the issue is what democracy is all about. So the commission exhibits true democracy in, in our Lahu'i. But also with the department. And why do I say that? It's because last year, December seventeen, twenty twenty-four, um, the commission accepted the department's um, uh, pilot program, indigenous native Hawaiian pilot program. And look what we have today. From December to July, just this Saturday, right behind me, um, is our brand new home. Donated by Aloha Containers, they came up and they, they donated these forty-foot, two forty-foot containers offset by five feet. Um, I got messages on a screen over there. But, um, they, they donated that, they cut out the doors, the windows and everything and installed doors and windows. And then we had Brian Kahaina with, with Tyson Services and his amazing crew that was able to bring in this terrain, this crazy mountainous terrain, um, these two containers up onto this hill. And I gotta tell you, bro, this is a great time. We have Auntie Blanch's nephew. If you guys know Auntie Blanch, Ramanalo, she's the hammer. On one call, she called her nephew Solomon Kahalawai with Kanai's Trucking. And they came in here and made it possible for these um, uh, containers to even be in this position. And then we have the Chevy brothers, the Souza, Souza brothers from Maialua who first came on the scene. So why am I talking about this? Now, of course, Aloha Containers, that's one highly family, but they're local. Um, they do good business here in Hawaii. And a lot of you probably use their products. You don't even know that that's the family behind it. But our community came together to help each other to make this a pilot project that is successful. We're on the last stage of fulfilling the terms and conditions that the commission had set forth. We have the fencing already available on property that's going to be pulled by Kanai's Trucking. They're gonna mend the fences here and then we just got to clean out the swell. Other than that, we are already planting. We have cantaloupes in our raised bed. We have popolo, um, uh, noni and olenna as medicinal herbs to do laula paau over here. We have papaya, we have, uh, two types of walla that's growing on the property. And what is that other one? No, the lilicoi, but that, that herb, don't always keep
Uh, oregano.
Oregano. We have oregano growing. It's small right now, but now my wife is being able to um, clean out another portion where she's going to start her own personal garden over there. And my mother-in-law is coming back on the property to help and do her stuff. So I say all this, we're in a good time right now. We're in a good time right now when if you're no more solution to the problem, I think you should just kick back, bro. Because the continued attacks is not helping. But I tell you what, what is helping? What is helping is our people getting together to make it work. Now, for those of you interested and continue to do on, on the pilot project like this, let me just send out a word of caution. It is not easy. It is not easy. Um, I'm almost sixty-one years old and my wife is in her fifties. And we really, we really bust some sweat. So this is a sweat equity program. And I hope that the program will be able to be expanded to include a lot more of our Lahu'i at different places on the island chain. So, um, I encourage our people to engage and get involved and be supportive um, because it can work. But if you do get involved, I give you a word of caution. It's not easy, bro. You gotta come up with a plan. Um, the department had put together a program on the Julie Controller. I gotta tell everybody, hey, Julie Controller, you is awesome. Anybody got anything to say otherwise than that? I disagree with you because Julie did a remarkable job. So I just want to stick to that. Now, I want to move to one more thing. Yesterday, I, I gave credit to LMD. And it was Clay Young who also mentioned somebody else and that brother's name is Kaala She. If you guys don't know who Kaala She is, you should get to know him. That brother, his family from Papa Kolea. Um, his family is solid, but this brother is solid. He came in and helped the department with the marketing of the industrial lands. And that guy, he said, and I, I want to apologize to him in front of everybody. When I'm wrong, I don't mind being wrong. And he told me this morning, don't worry, Demont, I'm not there for credit. But he should have the credit because he did a lot of work um, in helping to get native Hawaiians on industrial lands. So we have two examples from what I said yesterday to what I'm saying today. Is that Hawaiians are coming together. We are working together. We are coming up with solutions. If you see a problem, not just grumble, bro. Come up with a solution. Come up and say how you think you can make it better. If you can't do it better, then say it. And then the last thing I would like to say is, um, Shailin, aloha. Thank you for being on the commission from Kauai. We love you. We, we look forward to seeing your work. Bro, we just look at this commission board right now and we know that we're on good grounds going forward. Because we have a unified body right now. Now, of course, everybody get their own opinions and everybody get their own vote and that's cool. We're not stepping on none of that. But at least this board, this commission is in control of the situation, understands the subject matter and, and allow us to be able to be a part of it. And we love you guys. And I just want to, the last minute or so for my wife.
Um, I think for me throughout this project, you know, I tried to, I usually don't say anything. But I tried to do my part in supporting my husband, his project and all beneficiaries because I want this project to work. Um, and I, and I tried to reach out to big companies. So I just want to say, somebody told me, you know, if you build it, they will come, right? That phrase. And I think that's really true because all these big companies that have so much money that could easily donate, they all said pretty much, while we commend you for what you're doing for native Hawaiians, unfortunately, we cannot assist you. It was the local companies that struggle just as much as we do that said, you know what? What you're doing is helping our people. I want to jump on board. And it was like my husband said, non-Hawaians too. So I think they're out there. You know, people want this, people want Hawaiians to move forward. So I think it can happen. It can work. You know, so that's all I have to say. It's beautiful.
Yes. When the little guy can get the help, I'll tell you what, everybody else can benefit. Take care of the little of us. Like Jesus said, what you do to these little ones, you do to me. The first shall be last and the last shall be first. Amen. God bless everybody. Have a blessed day. And aloha to everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is Fire Kapilani Spencer.
Aloha, Mai Karko.
Aloha.
Ovalka Ino, Kapilani Spencer. Noho ao i villages of La Uipua Akao Eha. Oh, Kalamai. Kalamai, I had to turn off my TV. But anyway, um, I just want to, um, address the commissions today. First off, by thanking Chair Kali Watson for your longstanding diligence while being our chair at DHHL for honoring the twenty-five percent blood um, quantum requirements, which is needed for our people to um, be sustainable on our land, to be able to secure our families while on the waitlist. And also ensuring the successor for programs like ours in the rent-to-own with option to purchase after fifteen years. Um, I just wanted to, um, add that for personal reasons. I've, I've experienced at least four families that have lost their homes due to the blood requirements that were never ours to adopt to begin with. And I also want to remind the commissions that like the others have testified, and it hurts to hear the testimonies from our people as we struggle to identify ourselves back to Aina, which is our legacy and also um, Hawaiian Homes Mission Commissions Act, um, that we need to uphold and respect. Um, Kalamai, I want to get back to, um, my testimony because usually I get off track and before you know it, the ten minutes is up. So let me get back to my script as I don't want to miss anything. But firsthandly, yeah, I wanted to thank you Chair Kali Watson for your diligence to our people in trying to help establish some kind of security, um, in our homes on our land. Um, okay, so I want to stand, I want to also state, Kalamai, I also want to state that I stand in solidarity with the Non-Akuli Housing Homestead Association, Community Association in their efforts. Um, that the Non-Akuli, um, models for their shopping center on DHHL land show how reinvesting proceeds into the surrounding communities can create jobs, economic stability and serve as a model for other Hawaiian communities. This type of development helps ensure land, home and healthcare securities for our people. These proceeds should be reinvested into the Hawaiian community to help build up economically for a more secure and sustainable future, free from the need to rely on outside funding. Thank you for the steps being taken to address, like I mentioned before, the outstanding concerns of our Lahu'i, particularly the important initiative to reduce the blood quantum requirements from fifty to twenty-five percent. But in, in, in originality, we are trying to push for original mission statements of Prince Kohio, Kalaniana Ole, and his blood requirement of one thirty-second and a ninety, nine hundred and ninety-nine year lease. Um, this issue is deeply personal for me, as I mentioned before, the loss of four families in our LV four community. Um, it was really unjust and unfair for these families to lose their homes after losing a loved one. This totally displaces our people from the land. And their, their, um, their need to be on the land as we are statistics in our own land and we need to protect this right. Um, I'm going to pass this. I've witnessed the families and I have already mentioned the blood quantum. And also, um, there was a May meeting with DHHL and Ikaiko Ohana. And I am here also to remind Chair Watson, as you mentioned, to remind you that our LV four community are here waiting for our leases and we'd like to know what's happening with that as we cannot lose any more of our families um, due to the blood requirements, um, imposed on us, not by, um, Prince Kohio's original legacy, but that of Congress. But anyway, um, it just places our people in strict compliance under imposed restrictions, limiting our land back opportunities. Um, this was never Prince Kohio's mission and it should not be the Hawaiian Homes Commission's, um, mission statement either. And we need to push for the one thirty-two at nine hundred and ninety-nine years in order to stabilize land back opportunities for our people, not only for that, but to also have the resources needed to thrive on our land. Um, I've already mentioned that I believe that all of Kohio's mission statements, original mission statements should be bought back. Um, yeah, and the question should be not who is Hawaiian enough? Our focus should be ensuring that every descendant of this land has that opportunity to reconnect to Aina to thrive and to carry forward the legacy of our Ali'i. Third, I may ask, um, well, I did, I already asked, where are our leases? When will we be expecting our leases in hand? Um, at that, so that we can name our successors at twenty-five percent, securing our homes in case of a loss of a loved one. Um, we cannot displace our people anymore. We need to be secured in our homes, in our legacy, for our future generations to come. Um, I already went through all of this. Oh, also I need to address some, um, internal concerns in our community. The hillside along Kanaalehu Drive, um, drastically overgrown beside some of the residents' homes, the steep ingrate of the hills, um, it's loose space course and it's difficult and dangerous for the residents to get up on the hill to maintain the overgrowth. Um, this is a concern, um, and we need clearer guidelines that define whose responsibility it is to ensure the safety and upkeep of these areas. Um, is it DHHL Kuliana? Is it Ikaiko Ohana Management? Is it on the resident themselves? Um, or is it a county question? Uh, I think the community deserves clarity on this issue. A lot of them are kupuna and no, they can't get on the hill. So we have a really great community here where a lot of our our neighbors, they malama each other. And that is what us Kanakamole, this is what we do. This is what we stand for. To uplift our Lahu'i for generations to come because we're a dying race in our own land. And we're being pushed out by the democracy of the United States, which wasn't ours. It was imposed on us. So I just listened to all the testimonies that go on and our people are always fighting for justice to belong, belong where? In our own home? Fighting for what? The next generations to come? To sustain ourselves in an economically almost impossible system that is not ours? So back to our Aina where our people can thrive. Give us our land, our resources and the needed tools. And we can accomplish many good things for our Lahu'i, for our Keke, for our kupuna, our generations to come. And this is what I stand for, for our generations to come to have a place, not to be displaced, but to have a home. A home, a secured home that they can call their own and lead to the next generations to come. We're being pushed out. And no, Las Vegas is not the ninth island. That is a hurtful statement and that needs to be retracted. Just like how all our original statements need to be re, 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 need to be revitalized. Because I believe, and I strongly believe this is the time to hooli this system and take control of our Aina, our land and our resources and to protect our kupuna EV. Because they're all being pushed into a Western niche. So, um, I'm not sure how much time I have left, but I kind of did get off script. Um, I'm not sure where I am. Oh, another concern. Residents have been complaining and I keep telling our residents that if they have concerns to please report this to management. Attend these DHHL meetings. Um, I talked to David Pope and, um, I had concerns from residents dating the speeding cars going up Ko'olol Street, um, especially since the new New York Division Street, especially since the new New York Division had opened. Being the top part of the road is still closed due to construction, there's been numerous accounts of speeding vehicles. Well, right now, yes.
Can you start to summarize?
Okay, so anyway, back to this concern, I don't know how we're gonna address this. If it's a DOT question, like back to the road, who does it belong to, is it DHHL, is it a management? Or a DOT issue that needs to be clarified, but we need the department to look into these accounts. And to prioritize the needs of our community at the village of La'opua Kalfor. Mahalo for having me and. Thank you again for your service and I appreciate all of you folks. And I believe if we work in solidarity, that many things can be accomplished together.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next testifier, Kapua, Kalikua Kamai.
Where's our leases?
Aloha, ova' kapua kili iko'a kamai no ka Aina opula pulaka avava whanaima'ao. I signed up to speak. I signed up to speak to Uluke Kukui. And their developer, Ikenakea, and their gratis lease. For sixty-five years. If those of you commissioners that have been here for a while, you have heard several of us beneficiaries speak to rentals. And about the treatment that our beneficiaries have had from these various. Various. Developers who become our landlords and our property managers. You know, I hope. That the department has taken note. Because it's very important when a former renter enters this room and calls himself a survivor. Because that's not a normal rental condition and that's not the type of condition that the department should be allowing. For our beneficiaries. You know, Kali, I thank you so much Chairman Watson for your broad views and your broad opportunities that you're providing our. Community, our beneficiaries, such as these rentals. Or the rent with the option to purchase. Because that's something that more of us need. So I thank you for that opportunity, but I've always been concerned about over, overdevelopment of that type. Because we do know that a lot of us want our own single-family property, yet we're not in that financial position to get there. One would think that once we sign the list, we start that planning. But sometimes just getting by day to day is a struggle in itself, so we need your help. And just like the department helped the Ho'olima Lima renters that are for the most part owners now. Thank you to the department and the Nahaza program and their loan program, that those renters. The majority of them that weren't prepared are homeowners. Because the department stepped in, because a developer didn't move on these renters soon enough. And it shouldn't be somebody else's kuliana to tell me, hey, your fifteen-year clock is going up. You know, you should know that when you sign that agreement on day one, that you've got fourteen years to prepare. Because the fifteenth year, you should be there, you should be happy, comfortable that you're ready for it. But a lot of us, like I mentioned earlier, are still struggling. So financially, the department came through. That was a solution, so like some of the other beneficiaries that mentioned last month and have mentioned throughout the years. We need assistance, Uluke Kukui could be one of those solutions for those type of people. You that want to stay a renter for your duration. We have these rentals for you. You that want to be a renter while you prepare for your own property, this is a project for you. Because we're gonna work with you from day one, because we hope that within three to five years, you're financially able. To start making your payment because you put aside something for your down payment because you have a reduced rent. And to that rent, because Ikenakea has a gratis lease. And they're looking at serving the eighty plus, eighty percent AMI. The solution is reduced that. You know, I'm sure that there is a, a table of how many percent of what they have. But maybe instead of looking at the eighty percenters or these eighty percenters could be the ones that's gonna purchase. But they should also be renting out to the sixty percenters. Because maybe in some time, they could do it, I mean, one of our best financial advocates and consultants is Helen Y. Her story was, she wasn't financially able, but with assistance and with her own determination. She not only became able, she became a financial consultant to help other beneficiaries. And so the department has utilized her services and others. You know, but this is the kind of things that our people need, is we need a, not just a kick in the butt, but we also need that back. You know, the hand on the back, let's keep moving, you know, you're, you're going now, you're here, we're gonna help you because you've indicated this and we want to help you here. So I advocate like my president Jan Makepa Whanaima Valley Homestead, that this should be a rental. For those that are wanting. And ready for or getting themselves ready for single-family homes. Because that's the ninety-nine-year plan. That our prince had in mind, return us to our soil. So that what. Mana'ole, Kalamai brother, what he had just shared with all of his, Kalai, what he had just shared with all of his planting. You know, that's something, after thirty years, now I'm finally planting things, you know, but it, it takes us a while. And here I'm on the downslope, so let, let's help our people to do what they wanted to do in the first place. When we all signed the list, that was our intent and then life came along and it's not as easy as we think, especially if. We're not highly educated and we don't have those opportunities to fill slots that require those alphabets behind our names. Or that's not our, our plan. Babe, how much time do I have? Okay, wow. So, yes. I'm glad for Ikenakea, but is this a precedence that we're gonna be setting for all of our rentals, developers? You know, are we gonna be giving them? The nine million Nahaza dollars? You know, is this the, is this the standard, is this the new standard or is this an exception? If it's an exception, why are we doing this exception and only now, or is it based upon history? You know, one of the concerns that I have with HC. TB was when they built Halemakana on Nanakuli, was they ran out of funds. So they had to get other funds and these other funds allows non-beneficiaries to reside there. And that's something that I've shared before, is that the concern is, we want these rentals to help our people. But we want to make sure that it's our people that we're helping, that we're not opening the door for non-beneficiaries. I mean, here we're talking about those that have less than fifty percent. After for years and decades, they thought they did, but according to somebody's interpretation of Palapala, they don't. When you, when you access funds that is federal for all, then you just close the door. On many of our beneficiaries because they didn't get in line soon enough, because they don't know it. So, I'm thankful for that, I'm very thankful for those opportunities, but I just want us to be maka'ala. About the precedents that we set and based upon what guidelines? And are we thinking about what has been shared before, today we also talked about the Nanakuli Mall. Why did the community come and namu namu about the association? Not the mall, but about the association, because it was their opportunity to bring it before you, so you could take an action. So it wasn't the first time that beneficiaries have said, one of the biggest proponents of the association. Engaging with the community is Jermaine Myers. Her voice is silent today unless she sent in written communication, which she's so grateful. But when we come to you folks for, you know, various things, it might not only apply to the thing that we're speaking of. It might also have applications on other projects on other islands, so we're very reluctant to speak outside of our zone. And in, in a way, it's kind of mahaloi, but you know, when it's still part of my community, I, I do take that leeway in sharing my mana'o. But that's why there are so many people that came forward and it wasn't really about the agendized item. It was about the community and having an association that's. Built to benefit the community, but the community has not seen those benefits. Outside of the properties that's there, you know, what programs have they installed? Have they activated that is actually part from that entity there? We have other entities that I mentioned, the Nanakuli, Ahupua on Nanakuli, Uncle Black in Julian Kirkland and. Josh, poor memories, so we've had other entities that do projects, even, even on their evening Saturday. Ma'keke, you know, that's another entity, that's not the Homestead Association, that's other individuals that are doing things. And because that mall is there, they have someplace to do it for their community, by their community. But that's something that the association one would think, say, hey, let me help you to do these things in a direct manner, mahalo.
We're gonna have a, take a recess for lunch and we will reconvene at one PM, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to go?
Okay.
Ready to go?
Ready. Are you ready? Yeah.
Okay, we're back in session. Next up, J eleven, Lourdes Torres. I don't know if I'm saying it. Okay, next. J three, Charmaine Naoni. Okay, the next one, Kiko Inamoto.
Aloha, Mai Kako.
Morning. Oh, good afternoon.
I am Kiko Inamoto, a co-founding member and grant writer for the Maui-based Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association. This seven-month-old homestead beneficiary association, or HBA, is an IRS 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association respectfully requests that the Hawaiian Homes Commission consider an award at its October twenty Maui meeting to the HBA, a two-year due diligence right of entry to Pulehunui South. The association desires the ROE in order to plan, design, and fundraise for a housing and farming community at the six-hundred-forty-six-acre Pulehunui South Homelands tract at Puunene in central Maui. The Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association seeks to collaborate with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands to develop the Pulehunui South Homestead project for ten reasons as follows. First, at the July twelve DHHL informational session on Maui, department official Kalani Fronda announced that DHHL will award fifty Honokawai farm lots in 2027, fifty-five Waiehukomauka ag parcels in 2030, and one hundred Pulehunui farm lots without an estimated year of delivery, but presumably beyond 2030. Indeed, the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act Sections one oh one B two and five state quote, "The principal purposes of this act include placing Native Hawaiians on the land set aside under this act in a prompt and efficient manner and pursuing strategies to promote community-based development so that traditions, culture, and quality of life of Native Hawaiians shall be forever self-sustaining," unquote. Secondly, Maui Commissioner Archie Kalepa and Grammy Award-winning recording artist and Maui ag weightlister George Kahumoku Jr. both support Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association in its effort to develop Pulehunui South. Commissioner Kalepa toured the acreage March twenty-one, and Uncle George visited the Aina July third. Excuse me, I'm gonna close the door. Thank you. Third, the Honolulu-based G seventy design and architectural firm is committed to the HBA-driven Pulehunui South project. G seventy Principal Architect Rin Matsumura expressed this commitment during her Zoom advocacy at the December sixteen Hawaiian Homes Commission Community Meeting on Maui. Fourth, Homelands Leaders Incorporated Pulehunui Hawaiians Homestead Association on December eighteen in partnership with four Maui beneficiary-owned entities: Hawaii Taro Farm LLC and three nonprofits, Hui Ulu Olo o Maui, Ma'Kanano KeKayo Ulu, and Pa'upena Community Development, Inc. Fifth, two county of Maui department heads support beneficiary-driven Pulehunui South farming and affordable housing initiative. Housing Director Richard Mitchell wrote an April four letter of support for the project, and Oeve Resources Director Kapono'a Molita'o is the cultural advisory advisor to the project. Sixth, Native Hawaiian Philanthropy Executive Director Ku'ule Ma'upala will host ten national philanthropists the upcoming week of September twenty-nine to potentially fund Maui indigenous-led projects, including the Pulehunui South undertaking. Seventh, Pulehunui Association volunteers daily monitor Pulehunui South to provide security against homeless trespassers and people dumping refuse and derelict vehicles. As you mentioned earlier today, Chairman Watson, vagrants ignite eighty percent or more of brush fires. So beneficiary monitoring and developing of the acreage will mitigate the threat of wildfires in this dry, wind-swept homelands. Eighth, DHHL planner Julian Cachola originally had recommended during an October thirteen Zoom session that included Maui Commissioner Kalepa that beneficiary leaders on Maui take on a housing and farming project at the six-hundred-forty-six-acre Pulehunui South Homelands tract. Ninth, on behalf of project partners, Pa'upena Community Development, Inc., submitted eight months ago on November fourteen a non-homesteading land use pre-application for the Pulehunui South acreage. And lastly, Maui Homelands leaders had campaigned as early as April twenty-second of last year, fifteen months ago, at the commission meeting on Molokai for a beneficiary-driven Pulehunui development. For these ten reasons, the Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association respectfully requests that the commission at its October twenty Maui meeting award to the beneficiary organization a two-year due diligence right of entry to Pulehunui South. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Next on the list is Robin Kelly Inohomoku. Robin, are you in the room? Okay, moving down the line, Kainoa McDonald. Jojo Tanimoro.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jojo.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I wanted my subject to be about the Hawaiian homes watershed area. And I think Kamaki Kalaheli started off real good with all of this stuff that's happening in Nanakuli that's available to them. But in Kauai High, I'd like to say that our problem is accessing water. If we can get potable water to Kauai High, then we can do our community development, we can build our residential, we can expand the lands in Kauai High. But in the last forty years since I got my lease for Kauai High, that was the problem, and we couldn't use the land. So I went next door to Kohala Ranch, and that's why we get our water now for Ka'ilapa. Problem with that was it was supposed to have been temporary. It's beginning to look like temporarily permanent, and it's too expensive, even with the approval of the water subsidy. But what I'm trying to say is the watershed is in Hawaiian homelands. The difference from forty years ago was the streams and the gulches used to run water, and now they all dry. And so we keep asking to get water for Kauai High, get the department to help. We went through all of that for the last few years already, Kali, and we still stuck at the same place, except we got the water subsidy back, and thank you very much. But the water resources in our area from Naukohala to Waikalua, Puuwa'ua, the water resources are going away from Kauai High, and the department does not seem to be willing to work. So from the community side, I'd like to say the problem that we experience is access to go visit the areas on Hawaiian homes so that we can get an evacuation road out of Ka'ilapa because Ka'ilapa is all fenced in now. And the other side is Honokoa gully, which will allow us to get towards the harbor side. Except we know from Hawaiian homes that going towards the harbor will cost millions of dollars. The cheaper route would be to Kohala Estates and Kohala by the sea where our water comes from. We have been working this past year with the county, with the state agencies around here with our neighbors, and they are on board to take a look. In fact, the county public works came up with money so that their road is a public county road up to the boundary line of Hawaiian homes. We're looking for Hawaiian homes to give us a right of entry to connect to the county road because the county take care of our roads on Hawaiian homes. We have not succeeded in getting that right of entry. And so even though we're working with everybody else and they are on board, they're trying to contact the department and there's no communication. So now we are going backwards to the office in Wyndale and hopefully start something new so that you guys know that we're trying on our part the best that we can. But now we go back to the watershed because the watershed can be restored according to the people that the commission allows access to those lands on Hawaiian homes on that side. But it won't allow access to the beneficiaries, and it's to our safety concerns that we need to know. And I don't know if I went all over the place with this, but I hope you understand what I'm trying to get at. But we need to get Hawaiian homes to give us a right of entry so that we can go with the department, the county public works, the fire department, and even the Cultural Resource Advisory Council to go see where we can place our roads and where we might be able to utilize a Ma'ukamakai trail like how they did in the old days because Queen Emma now on the side of us are looking to expand. They are also looking for the same resources that we have been asking for for forty years. And so I'm asking this commission again. We are trying to do our part. The department does not respond. We are trying to get partnerships with all of the people in our communities to move Kauai High forward. We need water to do that. But we cannot get our request of right of entry so that we can plan where we're going to put the connection of the roads. Now, the next one that's coming up is the harbor expansion. Now, they need water too. Hawaiian homes could connect to that. The State Department of Transportation has to expand the roads down at the harbor. So funding is not gonna sit with Hawaiian homes only, but it will sit by itself if you guys don't get on board. The community is getting involved with all of these organizations so that we can come up with the idea and the planning and the partnerships to help work with Hawaiian homes, but Hawaiian homes don't like work with us. We can't even get a community development for ourselves. We have the bus going right back and forth. We don't have room for these people to park their cars so they can catch a bus. They're parking on the road and blocking the traffic. But if the association wanted a job, they can make a parking lot, charge for parking, and make their own money for the boat. They could also make camping or whatever if they had the water to the seventy-two acres that they have a license to because people doing that already. In fact, last weekend, we had people camping for the whole weekend. No more water. And it's blocked. These people are trespassing. Nobody care. And that's the attitude Kauai High is getting. And so I'm asking the commission to help us get a request to go see these areas so we can look for our water and start community development, restore our watershed, provide the fire risk mitigation. And in fact, even And in fact, even the Makahuna Gulch is all in the harbor where we used to go swimming or deep water for fishing. It's not, you can drive your car over there, dry land, and came from the gulch. And they gotta bulldoze that area. So that's my request to get the department to communicate with us. In fact, maybe you guys should come over and make a presentation to us so that we can update what the department has and what the communities around us are taking away from us. And we can get together and start talking story because we gotta get on board commissioners, and we need your help. And whatever way communicate with me, it would perfectly find me. So I'd like to thank you, all of you. And I think it's time to work with the community again instead of making us invisible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jojo.
Thank you.
Last call for Robin, Kelly, Nohomoku, Kainoa McDonald, Lourdes Torres, and Charmaine Naoni.
No?
Nope. You go, Lani. You go.
Hello, commissioners. I just wanted to speak actually on the Ma'ili ulukukui. I am the consultant for Ikena'ka as a community coordinator. Just to give some you folks some dialogue of what's been happening, we are reaching out to the community. I did hear some of the concerns. On August eighteen, I will be reaching out at the Wyandotte Camp gathering place with all the different Leaver churches that are actually pastors that are all homesteaders as well as beneficiaries. So we are reaching out to the communities and sharing about the project. And you know, there is some concerns regarding the rental program, but we're just sharing about what the development is about, about getting people to the affordable rentals now that are less than eighty percent AMI. So I am continuing to do community outreach. We will be working on September out to the Nanakuli Homestead. I've reached out to already Wyandotte Valley Princess Kahanu and their group. So I just wanted to share, the project is moving forward, and I'm hoping now more of the communities that have concerns, they can reach out to me. And I will be going out to each of the communities every month. We're looking to probably in thirty to sixty days to close on it. And then when we do that, we can start on the construction. And I just wanted to update you commissioners on it that Keegan Flaherty and I are working out into the community. And you know, there is a lot of concern about, you know, the rental. And I think as we go out, you know, I just share with them, you know, this is about people on the waitlist that cannot afford housing, affordable housing. So this is, I think it's an excellent program that we can use this rental as a stable affordable housing and get them to homeownership. And if there's anyone out there, we will be coming out to the community. And I just wanted to share with you commissioners that this project, I think, once it's developed, we'll have the wraparound service of the resource center in the Kohiu Kako, which we're looking to have OHA. We do have DHHL, which I think is a great bridge for us as beneficiaries. And so I just wanted to share with you folks and that you folks know that Keegan and I will be at the community every month we're in it. And so if anybody wants to reach with me on the on this project, they can reach me at kalpeahomesets@gmail.com. And you know, I'll answer any questions that we have. But we look forward, Keegan and I, and getting to the community and getting this project to be one of the first projects with the wraparound service and bridging the gap between beneficiaries, the department to help us with the affordable housing need for stable housing. So mahalo.
Thank you very much. Hey, we've come to the end of this month's agenda. Once again, we welcome Commissioner Shailin Ornellis. Hopefully, we haven't scared her away with all this work. I also like to thank all the commissioners for your energy, your time, your sacrifices on behalf of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act as well as our beneficiaries. It's very appreciated. Hope you guys enjoyed the lunch. You know, it's about as you get it. So next, next month's regular meeting is scheduled for August eighteenth and nineteenth here at Halepounoi. And again, mahalo for attending for all those that are on the internet. We welcome you guys. We look forward to interacting with you. And again, aloha. Adjour.